Good evening, I'll call to order this June tenth, twenty twenty five Fairfield Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. Start with our meeting minutes from June third, twenty twenty five. Commissioner Collins sitting in for. Twenty-two, I think, for Commissioner Braun and Ford.
Correct, and Commissioner Delgado is also online.
Okay, Commissioner Delgado, Commissioner Collins, you're in for at least the minutes. And that's about it, but may I have a motion on the minutes?
Make a motion.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, sorry.
Second from Commissioner Corcillo.
There's Commissioner Braun.
Okay. Sits off. We care who stands off for minutes.
I would say last time we went with Collins, this time it's Delgado.
I don't think we're gonna hold that against them just for a minutes meeting, so that's fine. Commissioner Delgado, you're still sitting in. Commissioner Harrison? Your motion.
They look good to me, thank you.
Commissioner Corcillo. Comments, questions from the commission? We put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Braun, are you sitting, were you sitting in on minutes, or do you want to?
I'll sit on minutes.
You approve them? Commissioner Braun, there was a motion to approve on this ad, do you? Do you have questions or comments, or do you?
No.
Vote to approve them?
Yes.
Pass, yeah. Next item is new applications recommended to public hearings, zoning regulation amendment. Application of fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street LLC to amend section ten. Line Residence District of the zoning regulations by adding ten nineteen age restricted housing district. ARHD with corresponding section ten point nineteen point one through ten point nineteen point nine. Pertain to permitted uses, density in the lot area. Application requirements, off-street parking, signs, light setbacks. Lot coverage and both limitations for the new ARHD. Is there getting anything bad?
Mister Chair, I just wanna clarify that this is the second application for this address. So the first application is an eight dash thirty G application. This is a second application that is seeking to revise the regulations for future project review.
Thank you. Which we need a public hearing for, so.
Correct.
May I have a motion? Commissioner Corcillo?
Move to refer to public hearing.
Right, is there a second? Commissioner Levy, seconds? Commissioner Corcillo?
There is required.
There is required.
Nothing further?
Yeah. Other comments or questions from the commission?
A question. Is this gonna be on the same timeframe? Is it a compliance app because it's a text amendment? Does it go along with the eight thirty G one for the same property? Or is this on?
No.
Sorry, this is Emmeline Harrigan for the record. No, they will track on different application dates.
Not a regulation amendment through eight thirty G, it's through our own regulations. In the regular codes, I guess. Wait, with this still vote? Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't raise my hand, sorry. So do we have, I guess, sixty-five days from, I guess, from tonight?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
With this still vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. If anybody here on this, we will not be hearing this application tonight, it's being referred to public hearing for a future date. Next item is ten eighty-nine Churchill Road subdivision application of Catherine Anne Wilcox Galroy. For two lots in a residence A zone. There's a note that this, there would be a request to table this to June seventeenth. Town engineer is still working with the state DOT. So in that, in light of that, can I have a motion to table? Commissioner Levy?
Table.
Second, Commissioner Corcillo. Comments or questions? We put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Pass unanimously. Is it worth? Miss Harrigan, to call the Black Rock Turnpike ones to open it and then table it as we discussed?
That would be fine.
Alright, let's do that, I will take one thing out of order quickly. Items four and five, forty-one eighty Black Rock Turnpike Zone Change Application of forty-one eighty Black Rock Turnpike. LLC to establish a design commercial district on land presently zone residential. Item five, forty-one eighty one, forty-one eighty Black Rock Turn, Black Rock Turnpike Site Plan Review Application of forty-one eighty. Black Rock Turnpike LLC to allow for a parking lot, station for an existing hotel and restaurant use again in the residential. A zone. Staff indicated that new materials were submitted. Or at least open this, I opened the hearing as I've done. But requests made to table it to June twenty-fourth. Correct, Ms. Harrigan?
Yes.
So any comments or questions on that, or can we just move to table to June twenty-fourth? May I have a motion? Commissioner Corcillo?
Move to table to June twenty-fourth.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Levy? Again, comments or questions? Put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hands.
Aye.
I see two remote hands, okay. So items four and five, forty-one eighty Black Rock Turnpike is table, are table, June twenty-fourth. I think that is how that gets us up to. Okay. So back to the item two on public hearing for four one Post Road zoning compliance and coastal site plan application of four four one. Post Road LLC for a four hundred and seventy-eight unit residential development. Pursuant to section eight thirty G of the Connecticut general statutes. Attorney Fallon, attorney blank?
Yes, sir.
Last we, last we left off on this, we closed public comments, subject to rebuttal. Depending on where rebuttal goes, subject to closing or where we're going, so.
Yeah. When we, we left it and there was a, I think a request from, from yourself, from the chair, to at least. A- a- Adam Blank for the applicant. There was a request that we at least consider submitting a updated traffic report. With a no left out onto the post road. And if we were inclined to do so, that would reopen the public hearing limited to that change. We have submitted that updated traffic report showing the no left out onto the post road, that was submitted, I think, Friday morning. And so our preference would be to allow Neil Alinsky, the traffic engineer, literally one or two minutes remote. On that only, let the public finish the public and then do one rebuttal and just one rebuttal and be done.
That's fine.
So I, so with that, Neil Alinsky, hopefully he'll be imported in.
Good evening. For the record, Neil Alinsky with SLR. So yes, as Attorney Blake mentioned. We did a, we did a, another analysis where we did a scenario if we were to prohibit. The left turn to Post Road. So that would remain a right, or that would be a right out only. And with that. A percentage, the majority of the traffic, we'd be, site traffic leaving the site would be as expected. And projected to instead route to the old Post Road exit. Which is good because the site has two points of exit and would still have two points of exit. So with that, if we got rid of the left, left out to Post Road. That projected, originally projected level service F for that left goes away. With the rerouted traffic to Old Post Road. You would then have those folks taking a right out of that site driveway to Old Post Road and then. Taking a right from Old Post Road at the circle at that stop sign. That would's, would go down one letter grade, I believe, in the afternoon peak hour. From a D to an E. But it's still better than an F, and in the morning peak hour, that's actually not projected to operate that at all, that would be. The old Post Road at Post Road, right turn during the morning peak hour would be a level service B. So, pretty good story to tell. Now, all that said, I do think the original level service F that was projected. If you were to leave that left out to Post Road. Is, well, it's overstated because. A delay of that extent that was brought up probably won't play out in the real world for several reasons that we. That, that we went over actually during the mixed use project. In reality, people, you know, people, some people are gonna reroute automatically on their own and it's gonna just self-correct. The other folks would take a right, some folks would take a, go out to Post Road, old Post Road rather. Just on their own. So anyways, I don't wanna take up too much time. At the end of the day, Condot's gonna review this thing, and if they don't want a left out to Post Road. That's what they'll, that's what they'll require.
And Neil?
Yeah.
Yeah. Just make sure that we're right here, that if, that the, the new, under your new scenario with, with the left out on the post road. If you're taking a right out from old Post Road. That the, the amount of delay currently without our development was about twenty-six seconds and that would increase by twenty seconds to about forty-five or forty-six seconds.
Correct, during the afternoon peak hour.
The worst time.
The worst time.
About a twenty-second delay.
That's good.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
And I think that, that's all the, we would sort of rest, unless there's questions.
Commissioner Randolph?
Yeah, at, at the expense of micromanaging, would it be possible to put a prohibition on left turn during certain rush hour times? Was that something that could be considered?
The answer is, I can tell you yes, but practically the answer is no, because you're probably gonna, will probably wanna. Force traffic to go right with a physical, you know, like those sort of curbed, it's not really a curb because the trucks can go over them, but those barriers. You can't kind of remove them and place them depending on the hour, so you could have a sign that says no left. And then it would be on an honor system that people don't turn left.
That's what I'm requesting, or suggesting.
Okay, I'll let you guys find that out.
Yeah.
We can, we can put a sign up.
Commissioner Braun?
Could you put the chart up with the new data?
Yep.
Thank you.
There it is.
Just as a housekeeping item, I can hear your side conversation through the microphone.
Ladies and gentlemen, the tiles with the green above are hot mics and they will catch. Why even quiet conversations which make it difficult for us, especially when we're, if there's a transcript that's needed for later. Commissioner Braun?
So could you just show on the chart the change from the prior material that you presented to your new material and. How many cars are gonna be egressing now onto Old Post Road in the morning and in the afternoon?
This is, what's up on screen now is that comparison?
Can you show which columns compared to what? I didn't get a chance to look at this.
Should you want me to?
Where's the original, where's the new?
So, the, there's three, there's six columns. After the movement lane groups, you see it says future combined with left egress to Post Road.
Is that the updated one or the original one?
That's the original. And then next to it is the future combined without left egress to Post Road. And that's the new? And you have that for the morning, which is that column there, and then you have it, the, the, all the way at the end, you've got the, the weekday. The same, same setup.
But it's.
We've highlighted in yellow the, the areas where the changes actually occur.
So if you're going east side driveway, that's the one up the hill. Northbound left would be prohibited, that was gonna go from an E to an F. So that would be prohibited, no left. Now, where it says D to an F. Is that prohibited? Because it still says D to an F.
And then you see that the last column over is the without left egress to Post Road, it's prohibited.
Was that prohibited on the original one? Because that's not highlighted.
So in the origi, so what's highlighted are the changes from the original to, to current. The, the original was the D, was the D, was the background. F, a fifty-seven second delay combined. If you got rid of the left-hand turn, there's obviously gonna be no, no delay because it's, you just can't, can't make the movement, so it says prohibited.
So why isn't that not highlighted? If that's, it shouldn't that be highlighted?
Sure, we, we can, we can highlight it for you.
Okay, and that's what it was confusing about. Okay, so. And where's the one that was the F to the F? Last time? I don't see that here anymore.
That's at the bottom for King's Highway.
That doesn't change.
Huh? That was the one that was gonna go up by two minutes, right?
No, that, that was what we just looked at.
But that was, I thought that was the F to the F, F minus, remember we had a whole conversation about that?
You know, that was the E to the F. That was, that was taking a left out onto the Post Road.
And how many cars will be exiting onto the old Post Road now if they all are directed that way instead of making a left? You wanna go, you're obviously not gonna go right into Bridgeport if you're trying to go left, so you're not gonna be able to get off. If we prohibit left turns from the east, eastern exit, right? So they would have to all be routed through the project to the old Post Road. And how many vehicles would that be then, in the morning and in the afternoon, rush hour?
Do you have a vehicle, a trip number?
Yeah, let me take a quick look. That would be. One moment. Okay, let's see here. So, it would be about around approximately a hundred and seven vehicles during the morning peak hour. And fifty-nine, sixty vehicles during the afternoon peak hour.
And, and is this the westbound? Which, where is it on here where they're going to the old Post Road? I only see one thing for the old Post Road here. The first line on.
So old Post Road to Post Road is a one-lane approach and you can only take a right turn, it's northbound right turn.
Halfway through that chart?
Yep.
It says old Post Road, northbound, take a right, so all the traffic would be directed there all day long, and.
Not all of it, not all of it.
What?
About eighty-five percent of it, if I'm not mistaken.
I thought you were gonna prohibit. Wait a minute.
So if you have a hundred percent of the traffic, you'll still be able to, you'll still allow the right turn out to Post Roads, that would still be around fifteen percent. It's just that the, the remaining eighty-five percent would not be able to go out to Post Road left turn, they would instead go out to old Post Road.
Okay, and. I thought the number was a hundred forty-three from reading, seeing the report last time we were here.
So a hundred forty-three is, is all the exiting traffic, but again, fifteen percent of that is taking, or still gonna be able to take a right to Post Road, so the approximate number is here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Alinsky, do you have a, in doing the numbers for this, do you have a, as far as professional opinion, have a preference? Which one is the better, the safer course of action?
All things considered, I would. I would. I would prohibit the left out. To Post Road.
You, okay, and. Questions, Mr. Alinsky? Just, I guess, for a procedural question, if that's something that we had decided to impose. Connecticut DOT overruled us saying they didn't want that. What happens then?
Well, so I think we. Our view is, number one, that, because I think, I think fair to Mr. Alinsky, your question was, which one would he prefer? Not, he feel that a left out would create an unsafe condition.
I, yeah.
And so, so our, our view is that they both work. Whichever route you wanna go, we're comfortable with, as long as it's subject to, to DOT and OSA approval. I, I, I. If, if you only want a no left out, you know. I'm not sure what happens with that if OSA disagrees with you.
I know, but, well, we'll have to talk about that with staff and essentially others as well, but maybe you should, I mean. I know you put forth the initial alternative, and he testified it was safe, I assume that hasn't changed, you don't wanna ask him that quickly.
Neil, do you, do you continue to believe that the original proposal does impose a, a, a safety risk?
I, I agree, I mean, I continue to believe that. At the end of the day, we're talking about delays, which do not equate to safety. It's just, they're just two different things. So the original proposal for the left out is still adequate, in my opinion. It might make sense to have a, if, if you do condition the no left turn, I would make it contingent upon Condot. Condot's ultimate approval perhaps, just how, however it gets worded perhaps.
And as, as, and I know Neil's sort of alluded to this, but as a practical matter, on the mixed use, there's a left out. That will have higher traffic than what the current conditions are that was approved by this commission. As, the residents here, it's all rental, they're gonna understand where the, the bottleneck is, and when that left out is a problem for them. They're gonna go to old Post and go right, so it is gonna stabilize itself.
Alright. Final questions, Mr. Alinsky?
Have you looked at the backup that would take place from the people currently exiting the old Post Road area of town that go out that way? Is that part of the background here?
Well, you could cut, you'd basically see it in the levels of service, so. The old Post Road approach during the morning peak hour, it's all gonna stay level service B for all scenarios. Even with the, the no left out scenario to Post Road.
Neil, the, the, the track, the background conditions takes into consideration all of the existing traffic.
Oh yeah, of course, yep.
I'm trying to understand why only fifty-nine to sixty cars would be added when there's like, what, six hundred parking spaces? How many parking spaces are there?
Because not everybody leaves there at the same, the same hour.
Well, that's one hour, that's the, the peak hour, but every hour you have that many, or, or close to that many, right?
A little less, yeah. And it's interesting, and one example is during the morning peak hour, old Post Road is, is projected to operate. Quite well at a level service B, because at that point at the circle. It's, it, it's only, they're one-way traffic lanes, and the majority of traffic is actually not in that eastbound direction of, of Route One there. during the morning. It's in the opposite direction, which old post road is not dealing with during the morning peak hour. If that makes sense.
Did you say that a different way? I'm not sure what you said just now.
So, old post road at post road is projected to operate at level service B, which is quite good during the morning peak hour. It's expected to stay that way regardless. And a key part, the key reason for that is because that post road approach, which is the eastbound approach of old post road during the morning peak hour, even if there is more, there will be more site traffic leaving, but the roadway traffic is in the other direction during the morning peak hour. Which is not at that intersection at all. It's at the other side of the circle, because it's a one-way loop.
With people leaving the old post road to get on that circle.
The combination of all the roadway traffic. And so even if they're, during the morning peak hour, yes, more people are leaving to go to work as opposed to entering, coming back from work, the site. So we're going to have more traffic exiting the site in the morning. But going out to old post road and post road at that particular spot, there's actually less traffic on Route One there, because it's, it's, it's in the eastbound direction of Route One, which is more of the, the PM um heavy flow.
Okay, I think I hear it.
Anything further? Or can I go back to public comment? All right. So. That will, then the applications, presentation of the new material, we'll reopen public comments limited only to this new information submitted. Um, so this is not a second bite at the apple for everything with this project. It is limited to this new information. Um, so I'll ask, is any member of the public wish to be heard on this limited information? Bob?
Yeah. What can we talk about?
Again, just keep your, if you could just say your name and address.
I'll keep it brief.
Yeah, I, I was going to say, if, if normally it's three minutes for the entire thing, if we can do ninety seconds, I think that would be ideal considering the limited amount, but we'll see where everybody goes.
My name is Linda Batchelder, and I live at one seventy-five Shortham Village Drive within two hundred feet of this property. And I travel the circle at least four times a day. And this out of the post, old post road is, is not better in that you can get on the post road, but then you're going to cross two lanes of traffic to go around a little piece of an island, and that's where it's going to back up. So you're still trying to enter the same place, but you're having to cross two lanes of traffic. And if I were living in the building, I would do that, because then you're going to back up the traffic further for those who are going to be leaving and trying to make a left-hand turn. So it's just a matter of how do you get all those cars in there? Doesn't sound better to me.
Thank you. Very great.
We call up page five of the modified materials, and after that, I'm going to be asking for the site uh development plan that shows the parking layout. Uh, it wasn't evident to me that the public was going to have an opportunity to comment after the hearing last week, but I'm happy to do that. We can call up that page five from.
Thought it was pretty clear that if new evidence was given, I was going to reopen it.
I'm sorry, can you?
Page five of the document that was filed on Friday. That Mr. Stolinski was just.
Oh, okay, gotcha. One second. It's a diagram, correct?
Yep. So the questions that the commission should pose to a traffic consultant are the following. First of all, did the, did a the traffic consultant do a thorough analysis of Plan D? Being the same full work that the applicant had done on what I'm going to refer to as Plan A. So I'm going to call the revised plan. And the, that's the first question in all aspects. Did the traffic consultant do a full analysis of onsite stacking? Of the stacking and the queuing length on the site? Did the applicant do a full impact study? And a traffic count on an old post road? Just as Ms. Batchelder, Linda Batchelder, just testified to, you can see on page five, the report that's up. That there's a, a number two and a number four. There's, so area of study one is shown, two, three, four, five, and six. But to Linda Batchelder's point, when a car leaves the circle diner driveway at one and has to take that right turn, arrives at number two. But seriously, there's no analysis done of that merge to the left. But, which, and once again involves travel across two lanes of traffic. But also, after you take that left onto that spur between two and four, there's no analysis done of that merge between four and six and what the impacts are on that.
What was that last part? In between what?
So.
Two and six, sorry.
So between the, after you get through two, and you make, try to make your way across the peak traffic and get that left into that little crossover. There's a merge there between four and six.
Yeah, okay, in between two, four, and six, which is like.
Yeah, and that was, that's not apparently been analyzed by the applicant. And if we can call up the site plan, latest site development plan.
Let me find it. Give me one second. It's the regular site plan?
One that shows the parking layout. And can we, uh, concentrate in the area that shows the, uh, exit onto, uh, there we go. Uh, the other, the, uh, old post road exit.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hergen.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
This was not orchestrated beforehand, so.
We can just shift it a little bit, uh, further down, so we get a little bit more of the parking area for that driveway, almost. And what has the analysis, the analysis been, I would ask the consultant, what the analysis has been on stacked queued up parking, or, I'm sorry, on stacked cars trying to leave the site? On all of those parking spaces that are there in the morning with cars trying to get out of their spaces and every day having a hundred and seven cars that are going to be taking that right turn out. And with cars in that driveway, trying to get out of their parking spaces with cars, a hundred and seven by the consultant's testimony stacked up. Then I spoke with Mr. Buberis today. He was unable to attend and frankly, uh, wasn't available, but we wouldn't have had him attend, but that, we don't have to quibble about that. But he assured me that I T E does treat delay as a safety risk. And I just went on my phone and I'm looking at the guidelines of I T E. And it says that under I T E guidelines and related transportation principles, that delay does constitute a safety risk. Here's why. Increased risk of violations. Extreme or unexpected delays can lead to risky driver behavior, such as ignoring traffic signals or gates, as Mr. Buberis said, testified when he appeared before the commission. Reduced visibility and attention. Traffic control measures and communication during delays must be clear and timely to ensure drivers can make informed decisions. Congestion and secondary crashes, delays, especially those caused by incidents, can lead to increased congestion, which elevates the risk of secondary crashes. Impact on emergency response. Delays can hinder the timely arrival of emergency services, potentially worsening, worsening the outcome of incidents. And, uh, once again, Mr. Buberis emphasized that delay is a safety issue.
Do you have like a page number or a title, just a citation to it?
Uh, it looks like this is Safe Systems. Uh, it's a Safe Systems guideline, uh, and it says Institute Transportation Engineers. On my phone set, it doesn't have a page number.
Section or something like that?
Uh, hang on.
Let me ask you this while you, maybe I can ask you to look while, if there's anything else, have you conclude and then look and give us that.
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, so, once again, I would appreciate it if the commission would pose those questions of the consultant. And, uh, I think that, uh, once again, uh, the full analysis has not been performed and, uh, with the circumstances, I don't think, I also just once again, don't think that this, believe that this commission can simply delegate its analysis on traffic to O S A or anyone. Certainly that is a stop along the way, but that does not leave this commission of having to make findings under eight dash thirty G or based on conditions. And once again, if there were an issue, then the applicant can return with a more thorough analysis. So if the commission feels that these questions have not been adequately answered, then the commission should deny the application, and that gives the applicant an opportunity to come back and fill in the missing information. But here we stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Green.
Mr. Chair, I have two people remotely.
Let's see, make sure the people in person. Ma'am, come on up. We'll just get a queue going as best we can. I see lady in the back, gentleman in the back. Again, if you can just keep the comments germane to the traffic.
Yes, this is traffic.
That's fine, yeah. And like I said, I, I know Attorney Green knows attorneys go a little longer. Which is what we like, because, uh, as they represent most of others, but I mean, keep comments to ninety seconds as best we can.
Okay.
Or less or a bit more. So thank you.
I'm Mark Aggettig, um, eighty-three Shortham Village Drive. And, um, I, in listening to everything about the traffic studies, it's this jug handle project that is slated to go in at that location, hasn't come up at all in any of the discussions. And, and my question to both part, and both side, is, is it has, has anybody looked at what those changes are going to do to this traffic study? Because it radically changes things. I mean, I, I just have the entrance just because I, you know, it, it, the, the traffic coming from the, from the west to the east goes from two lanes to one lane. From that point, from right where that entrance comes, where it comes in and out there. The, all post road now is two lanes going in each direction. It goes down to one lane in each direction with a left-hand turn lane down the middle. Okay, and they're going to put bike, bike trails on either side of that, and, and the sidewalks and all that, which is going to increase, you know, the, the safety to me of, of bicycles and trucks. There's crosswalks in there. It changes dramatically. And to me, without, without consideration of this project, which is supposed to start in, in Ju-, or in spring of twenty twenty-six to complete in twenty twenty-seven. So there's a whole year there of development on, on all of this. But this has to be factored in. It's going to have an impact on that traffic, big time. I mean, I'll leave, I'll give you, but all I did was go onto the Fairfield website, Fairfield Town website, and in the search bar, I put in jug handle, and the whole project comes up, and it's dramatic changes in that area. So I'll just leave this with you.
That's what you got on the internet?
This came off the, off the website, and it's, it's right here.
Okay.
Okay.
No, thank you. I just want to make sure I knew where it came from.
Yeah, yeah.
So thank you. That's that down as we part of the record, and then we can share it. Yep. Oh, you got another one? I see gentleman here, gentleman here, gentleman here.
Good evening. You commissioners, good evening. My name is Linda Hamilton. I live at forty-six Shortham Terrace. Just a block over from where these ladies live. I've lived there for fifty years. I'm not really from the Bronx. I don't want to go back to the Bronx. The traffic issue is horrendous now. For me to get off my street, I live four houses off the post road. To really get off my street, you've got to tack a half an hour onto the time wherever you're going. You, you just, you can't get out, okay? And of course, you can't go the other way, because they're doing the Ash Creek Bridge. That's been out of commission for a year and a half. I don't understand. They asked how many more cars would come into play? Did I understand that correctly? Uh, with this, and they said a hundred and something this way and seventy something the other. How is that possible with, uh, uh, building that houses almost five hundred apartments? That's got to be five hundred people minimum. And I don't understand how they think the cars are only two hundred and something. Okay, I, I know you want to limit it to the traffic. I think it's an accident waiting to happen. And I would just suggest that, once it's done, it's going to be really hard to undo, impossible to undo. And, uh, I could say so much more on a personal level, but I won't.
All right, one, two, I don't, we'll all see, we'll all have time, I think. So come on up, just look. First come, first served.
Uh, Sean Kelly, one oh four Shore Village Drive. Just to reiterate what Attorney Green stated, is the two intersections as you try to go westbound. If you leave the diner and make a right on old post, cut across post and try to go westbound, you're, there's two intersections that they did not study. Um, also, it's a hundred and forty-three cars are supposed to leave in the morning. Eighty-five percent of them is a hundred and twenty-three, not a hundred and seven.
Thank you. Wide on deck circle over there, that'd be fine.
But I'd speed it up. Hi, my name is Bill Bauer. I live at two nine nine Riverside Drive. And with the population that will be living in the buildings that are proposed, I assume there will be school-aged children. And that might require a school bus in the morning for elementary school, maybe for middle school, and possibly for high school. And then maybe in the afternoon, the same thing. And what I don't know is if in the traffic plan, or are the buses likely to stop on the post road itself? On old post road? Do they pull into the facility? And how will that affect people at that rush hour time who are trying to get out? Um, and certainly when a school bus stops, if it's on the main road, then traffic stops both directions. And that may again contribute to the gentleman who earlier said, when there's frustration about delay, maybe people don't obey the laws, maybe people don't, uh, you know, they, they get more frustrated and they're likely to drive unsafe. So I would like if the consultant or somebody in the review here could say, how many school buses will come? When they come, is it during a rush hour period or not? And what's the plan? Where are they going to be and what's their expected impact?
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening.
Hello. I'm Rod Rudolph, six twenty Riverside Drive. And I would like to amplify the point about entering the circle there. Uh, when there's traffic, there's room for two, maybe two and a half cars to be uh, before that yield sign at one time. And I know that when I'm the third car or fourth car back there, backed out onto, I guess it's the post road. Um, I'm feeling very vulnerable out there, um, as cars are coming fast. And I, I don't like, uh, I don't like to be out there. The extra traffic, I, I fear that'll back up even more, and I think it'll be very hard to enter that circle. Um, I also want to underline the point about the jug handle, as well as, uh, I'm aware of a a study that was done about reconfiguring the traffic circle in its entirety. I don't know the state of that, but I, I don't know how we could approve a development of this size until that is resolved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, Robert Allen, six eleven Riverside Drive. I've just, when I was listening here today, and they're talking about the, uh, the right hand coming out of that onto eastbound. No one has talked about, a lot of. no one has talked about, a lot of people are gonna find out you can go a quarter of a mile down, turn on Riverside and go down across the bridge and all the way down to the beach. And so what's gonna happen is, and once people find that out, they're gonna start doing that. And there'll be a line of traffic to the beach that way. And I live on the straightaway where the curve comes down right before Turning Road. And cars go forty-five miles an hour down there. And I have a grandson that I'm out with. There's a lot of kids in the neighborhood. And I think it's a terrific safety issue. And I think the only way they could stop it is to put speed bumps in. But there's gonna be so much traffic on there because I know the way people think. And if you're sitting there for ten minutes and you're aggravated, you're gonna find another way to get there. And you're gonna go around and turn on Riverside. And then you'll make your way back up to the Old Post Road that way. But that's gonna increase, and that's all neighborhood, tons of kids. That's gonna, it's gonna increase a lot of traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Alexu, one thirty-seven Shoreham Village Drive. And I wanted to highlight two things very quickly. One, the applicant survey is incomplete, um, for the traffic study. The traffic study did not take into account the recently proposed, um, uh, app, the application which this planning and zoning board recently approved for the former Bank of America site with the new restaurants and everything that will be going into that location. That will add additional traffic to the area and I can't even emphasize how dangerous and unsafe that area is. And I just wanna emphasize that that portion of the study is lacking in, in the applicant's application. Um, the second piece, I do apologize, this I learned about as I got off the train tonight. Um, there is a web soil survey off of the applicant for the sort, um, state of Connecticut, um, that came to my attention recently. It's from the Natural Resources Comfort Conservation Service. And the back of the applicant's, um, property is, was designated as a type ninety-nine. This was from a study that was dated seven twelve, two thousand twenty-four. And the type of, um, soil that is supposed to be back there is type ninety-nine, which is Westbrook monkey peat, low assault salt. So I believe in that situation, the type of soil that is in there is very different than what was applied for or what they mentioned as it being a sandy loam, in which case the drainage type's obviously completely different.
Okay. Points known, I, this is really versus for traffic, but we look.
I, I understand that. I, I apologize that gave my attention five minutes ago. I just wanna highlight it and I will obviously
That's fine.
Submit anything I can to.
Put it on the record, so that's fair.
I have a question for this person.
No questions. Let's, let's keep this moving with traffic.
I have a question for him. I'd like him to clarify something. The name of that report he found?
That's fine, yeah.
Uh, sure. It was from, sorry. Um, a web soil survey, National Cooperative Soil Survey, Natural Con- Resources Con- Conservation Services. And it's a soil map, uh, state of Connecticut, western part four four one Post Road. This is from the applicant.
From the materials?
Uh, yeah, I'll get it, I'll get this together as fast as I can and submit it to, for the record. Yes.
Well, if you're gonna submit it to the record, it has to be done in the next, what, ten minutes or so?
Do it as fast as I humanly can. I have a lot of time.
Any other member of the public in person? Saying anyone, welcome back to them. But who do we have online? I think you had a queue going.
We have four people online, starting with, um, Sarah Jaeger. Second is Marty Lametta.
Uh, to any member of the public who has not signed in on chat, uh, if you're joining remotely by a computer, please do so and I'll call for, uh, people via telephone after them. Was it Jaeger?
Yes. My name is Sarah Jaeger. I live at four two four Riverside Drive. And, uh, I appreciate all the fine points people have made about the flimsiness of this traffic study and incompleteness. I also wanna say that in the last week, I have twice left my house at seven in the morning and gone down Old Post Road and tried to cross that intersection so that I could either go to Stop and Shop or to go to Whole Foods. And of course, each time, there's been a huge accident on I ninety-five and people are pouring off the throughway down King's Highway cutoff and down Fairfield Avenue. And how it's, how are you gonna add to that traffic? I don't know. And where are emergency vehicles supposed to go when they're trying to get through a jam like that? And this is not uncommon. You know, traffic, there's trouble on I ninety-five every week. And the traffic jams right up at that terrible circle intersection. And, uh, putting more traffic into that seems like a terrible idea. And, um, also, yes, I, they will go down Riverside Drive to skirt all of that. And, uh, I don't appreciate all that traffic coming down my road either because there are so many children and bikers and pets and everything on our street. It's supposed to be a quiet suburban street. So I think that traffic study needs to be redone significantly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Marty Lametta.
Good evening. Good e- hi, I'm sorry for the delay. Um, good evening and I appreciate your time. Nowhere have I heard, I'm sorry, let me start back. I live at one fifteen Rowan Oak Avenue, right off Grassmere. And in this traffic study, I have not heard one sound about the crossover on Grassmere and Longview over to King's Highway. It's already a nightmare. And I haven't seen any traffic study that's addressed the crossover on these two streets. There's parking on both sides of both of those streets that haven't been addressed by the town. And I don't have the data, but if I recall, about three or four years ago, the town did a study about this area and nothing has happened. So I would appreciate that being included in the applicant's, um, address about traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Sydney Del Fico.
Hi, um, I apologize, I'm driving, so hopefully this doesn't cut out and I'll try to make it quick. Um, Sydney Del Fico, I live at three zero nine Post Road, so right on Post Road. Um, I just wanna make sure you can hear me, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Um, I, uh, submitted a letter with this information as well. Um, along with it, two videos of the traffic, uh, in real time in the morning. Um, and some skid marks that are on the road from one of many near accidents that I have witnessed standing outside and, and listened to. Um, and I just wanna reiterate that there is a concern for safety. People in the morning, they're speeding, um, down that road. If you look up, um, the records on how many speeding tickets between those rush hour mornings, especially in the last couple of months, there were cops out there pulling people over for speeding, obviously trying to help with the safety concerns, but there were many being pulled over. And if you take a right out of that now, you don't factor in the account of how many people now have to turn left. And they'll be doing, they'll turn down Riverside, they'll be doing U-turns on Post Road. Um, it is extremely unsafe. It's already unsafe as it is. And the morning is crazy. It's extremely hard to pull out of my driveway. Sometimes I sit there for a very long time to get to work. And if you factor in people trying to get to work now, they are stressed because they're gonna be late and if they're going to drive more reckless and it does pose a safety concern. And I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lastly, we have Nina Salzman so far.
Uh, yes, good evening. Um, I live at sixty-four Shoreham Village Drive. And I'll, I'll keep this brief because basically my comment was exactly what Sarah, um, Jaeger mentioned. I drive my daughter to school. Um, and, uh, repeatedly, many times in the last few months, um, drivers have been using Post Road as an alternative to the highway. Um, and that should be taken into consideration. Uh, the morning rush hour traffic has been horrendous. My daughter has been late to school repeatedly because the traffic has been crawling. Um, and I, I just can't imagine adding another a hundred-plus cars into that mix, uh, what, what that will do. So that, that definitely needs to be taken into consideration that this is not any roundabout in Fairfield. This is an al- alternate to ninety-five and people will use it as such.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who's at the fourth?
I don't have anybody else signed up. If you wanna do a last call.
Is there anybody joining remotely or by phone wish to be heard on this application limited to the new traffic information? You're joining by phone, please press star six to unmute yourself. Any member of the public in person, remote or by phone, wish to be heard on this application, limited to the traff- new traffic information?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Eve Berhenny, eight twenty-seven Riverside Drive. And I spoke at the last meeting and I'll reiterate it and other folks have already echoed this. I commute every day. I take Old Post. I cross over Post Road to that roundabout. And more likely than not, there has been an issue on I ninety-five south and they take the Post Road. And it has been, uh, very challenging to get myself through that area. And another gentleman said that feeling, that vulnerable feeling of kinda sticking out onto, um, the Post Road as you wait at the yield sign. And countless cars are coming down, uh, west, uh, commuting towards New York or wherever they're going. Um, absolutely, um, a safety issue. Thanks. Thanks for letting me, uh, share.
Thank you. Any member of the public joining in personally, in person, remotely or by phone? Wish to be heard on four four one Post Road, limited to the new traffic. Oh, ma'am, come on up.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Caro, um, two four seven Hunnady Avenue. Uh, and I, I apologize for coming in late, so maybe this was already brought up. But I know last time there was talk about diverting some traffic down Old Post Road. And I just wanted to say that on rush hours on Old Post Road, things get really backed up at every four-way intersection. And if there's more backup now, there, again, as the, the traffic expert said last week, the frustration could lead to more accidents. And it's also a residential road really, and there are lots of kids and bikers and it could be very dangerous for them. So I just wanted to add that too.
Thank you. Final calls? Anybody joining, uh, public, uh, any member of the public joining us in person? Ma'am, come on up.
Hi, Susan Hawkins, three oh nine Riverside. I just wanna, uh, touch upon what the last speaker said about the four-way intersections and residential and kids. I think especially if you think about the beach area, you're now then putting all these extra cars down to that intersection where you have kids on bikes that don't have an awareness of cars or kids on scooters in that neighborhood. It's on a daily basis. It's already dangerous. And then coming off of the Post Road onto Old Post, that, that intersection we're all talking about, it's very poor visibility, not even making, you know, traffic coming out for the cars going back in, just going around that corner. It's very poor visibility and I always go so slow because inevitably you see kids on scooters and bikes at that very place where we're talking about putting the cars out.
Thank you. Final call, member of the public?
I have a comment on, on the phone.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, um, my name's Jennifer Gaynor. Um, I'm at four sixty-one Riverside Drive. I did send in a, um, an email to the commission. Um, the one thing I just wanted to make sure and I apologize, I, I did show up late to this, so if this was covered, excellent. Um, the one thing I wanted to make sure that's covered in the traffic study as well is, um, the increased impact of package and food delivery trips in and out of this project as well for four hundred and seventy-eight, um, apartments. I would expect that, um, package and food delivery FedEx, Amazon, DoorDash, Uber, um, would be significant, especially because this type of project, I would also assume would have a lot of younger, um, demographic living in it. Um, so that, that's just something that I would hope would be factored into the, um, study. Thank you.
Thank you. Final call, member of the public. And I just tell Mr. Olinsky, uh, Attorney Green outlined some questions. I would be asking those questions at some point. So however, if he's thinking about it now, whatever.
Yeah, I took some notes and I think we will, we'll try to work that into the presentation and if we miss something, I'm sure you will.
No, that's fine. As long as that's done.
Yeah.
Um, what else was there? Okay, at least those, at least those five and then we'll see where we are.
Sure. Okay. Um, so on, on the, on the eight dash thirty G, the, um, that application has to be approved, uh, unless there's a substantial public interest that, uh, clearly outweighs the need for affordable housing. Those, and that, and that that public interest can't be affected by reasonable change to the application. Um, the, the sufficiency of the evidence, you have to have a quantifiable probability of harm, not a mere possibility of some harm to a public interest. And again, reasonable, if reasonable changes can be made, then you have to take the reasonable change over a denial. The, um, in this case, uh, is our belief that there's no, there just aren't health or safety matters which would justify a denial. Um, any valid public interest that's been, uh, identified can easily be protected through reasonable change to the development and conditions of approval. Um, Attorney Green told you a couple of weeks back, uh, that he and his team had laid out, the public had laid out for you evidence to deny the application. They haven't. Uh, in fact, if anything, they've confirmed that the application has to be approved. Um, and in a few minutes, we, we're gonna literally play back for you the words that you heard from, from their experts about the application. Um, the, 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 the fact that, uh, if you go to the next slide. So, right, the, one of the things that came up over and over, uh, not tonight, but in the, the prior hearings was that, and, and this came from Mr. Green himself, that size and bulk is the issue with the application, that it was out of character for the neighborhood. Um, and that, that, that is what I think the crux of the opposition to the project, uh, has been. And being consistent or inconsistent with the residential neighborhood is not a basis to deny an eight dash thirty G application. Um, and we've given you the, the, the town close case, uh, standing for the proposition that, uh, that, that appeal was sustained when the record didn't sufficiently support a commission's reasons for denial, which were that the traffic generated by the development and the size of the development at the proposed location, uh, were, were, were too great. The, um, the, the only complaints I think that you really heard from the opposition, uh, that are germane to the eight dash thirty G standards were, um, various iterations of Mr. Trinkus' uh, stormwater engineering-related, uh, comments and Mr. Bubares' traffic-related comments. I think those are the only two that actually related to the standards that you're evaluating. And so I wanna go through those in, in some detail and we will touch on some of the comments you heard tonight, uh, as well from the public. So, uh, uh, Mr. Trinkus, we had, we've, number one, we did submit in writing to you very detailed responses uh, to his opinions. You have those in the record and we're not gonna, uh, go through those point by point tonight. Um, and, and again, almost all of his opinions were essentially identical to the opinions he expressed on the mixed-use development, which were rejected, uh, but ba- based on the virtue of your approval of that project. Um, they, they were the same, the same thing. The, and, you know, he doesn't cite essentially almost any binding regulation or authority that you are required, uh, to follow. Um, on his opinions about inadequate treatment of stormwater, he would go back and forth between, you gotta follow the, the, the stormwater manual and the stormwater manual is incorrect and you need to ignore the stormwater manual, depending on, on the point that it was making. Um, uh, additionally, the concerns that he raised, um, were not concerns recognized by DEEP. They weren't, they weren't raised as issues, uh, at all, uh, by DEEP. His, his real only concern related to ensuring that further soil testing was done to confirm that the stormwater system will function, I'm paraphrasing it, as advertised. Um, and so, can we play that?
We make it a condition of approval, uh, the enge- the town engineers.
This is just for the record, what is, this is our. This is Mr. Randolph at the public hearing, questioning Mr. Trinkus.
Our public, this is a recording of our public hearing from last week.
Can you just restate the, the date of that and the time span, sir?
Uh, I, I can't read it. Can you?
June third and this particular clip starts at about two hours and nineteen minutes into the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, to play it?
Yes, please, sorry.
As a condition of approval of this project, uh, will that satisfy your concerns?
Only if all of the required testing is done to clearly demonstrate that the system will function as it's supposed to.
And, and of course, uh, from when that happened to, to now, uh, what has your engineering department done? Uh, they've wrote to your staff, it's part of your record. Um, in fact, I think it technically came in during the public hearing. None of us, I assume, including yourselves, were aware of it at the time, but, but the engineering department submitted a, an email to the staff, uh, saying that because of the nature of, of the soil at the site is varied, that, um, permeability, permeability field testing will resolve any issue, and that's with respect to the stormwater system. Positive results will confirm the design. Negative results could lead to redesign or further study. Um, and if approval is granted, please include it as a condition of approval, 441 Post Road. Based on comments above the soil, conditions may require additional testing and drainage capacity, which may require replacement of some areas of existing soils. Please add a condition of approval that requires that this portion of the stormwater design needs to be finalized to the satisfaction of the engineering department prior to the issuance of a building permit. Um, so Mr. Green's expert told you that if the engineering required testing and ultimately proved the system, that would eliminate his concerns. And lo and behold, your engineering department has now said they'd be satisfied with the condition of approval, requiring us to do additional testing, and that they want you to have a condition of approval that they sign off on the stormwater system, which they always have to do anyway. Uh, we have no objection to that as a proposed condition of approval. We, it's, it's always required that we get the stormwater sign-off. Um, we have, as part of our rebuttal, Rob, there you are, Rob. Um, Rob, I just want to ask you a couple quick questions, um, to, to put this into perspective. From an engineering perspective, do you anticipate any issues adhering to the engineering, uh, emailer condition?
For the record, Robert Pryor from, uh, Land Tech. Uh, no, we're, we're happy with that condition. In fact, we spoke to the town engineer, um, after receiving it and reviewed it with him, and he was, he was actually quite comfortable with it, so, uh, we're very comfortable with the condition that would, uh, require that testing.
And, and, um, and in, in your report, were the assumptions that you made, were they sort of conservative or were they risky with respect to the permeability?
No, we would say that we were on, we were, we, we leaned toward being conservative.
And, and if your conservative assumptions turn out not to have been sort of conservative enough, what does that mean in terms of tweaks or adjustments to be made to the stormwater system?
So it would be in our opinion that if, if soils were much worse than what we would expect, the stormwater system at most would, the footprint of the stormwater system might have to be adjusted, um, slightly to, uh, account for that, uh, condition of the soil. And that adjustment could be made within these same proposed limits of disturbance that the project has now. So it would be within the same footprint of the limit of disturbance that we have now. There'd be no further expansion toward the tidal wetlands or anything like that.
Uh, thanks, thanks, Rob. Um, the, the, in the engineering email they raised, which came up tonight as well, the questions about the jug handle, and, and you, you heard from one of the members of the public, and that it is, the jug handle is a project, that's the town project that is moving forward, uh, twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven completion. Uh, our site plan lines up with the jug handle, and, um, I think, Emma, it's out of order, but do you mind just? Quick. So it's, it's, our, our plan has been kind of made to match up with that jug handle. Um, of course, it's gonna require, uh, if we get your approval, you, you can see on the bottom, that's the jug, the jug handle realignment. And you can see that we're fairly square to it. Um, it's gonna, if we get your approval, there will absolutely have to be coordination with the town, engineering and DOT to, to get it perfect, and I'm not gonna say that it's perfect now, but it is designed to work with the redesign on the jug handle, um, which, which helps everything out, existing conditions, future conditions, it, it works. Um, the, the, the drainage, again, we think the drainage calculations that we've done work. We don't think we're gonna need to modify the stormwater system. Again, we're happy to do additional testing, uh, and to, uh, get the sign-off ultimately of your, uh, engineering, uh, department. So, so I think that's the drainage piece of it. The other, the other piece was related to traffic. Um, and most, most of the traffic, um, yep, it's fine, but most of the traffic, uh, issues are sort of speculative. Um, and they deal with possibilities, not probabilities. Um, and, and we'll, we'll give you the, the Avalon realities.
Please.
That Avalon Bay case, um, so in that, that was a case, there was claims by a zoning commission, the zoning commission opposed the project, uh, about inadequate gaps in traffic to allow drivers to safely exit from a proposed development on a road with a high traffic volume. And there were safety concerns raised for children at a nearby bus stop. And the appellate court said that was merely speculative and not supported by sufficient evidence in the record, where there was no evidence as to the extent of the harm posed by those claimed safety concerns for the probability of such harm if the application was granted. So, um, and I think, number one, I think we could take the position that, that there is no safety harm posed by the development, and certainly no safety harm with the mitigation that we've proposed, whether it's having a left out uh, on the post or by closing that left out permanently or for certain hours and making it a right onto, uh, Old Post. Um, and that was really the only, that was really the only meaningful concern that had, that was raised, that wasn't just a, a wild, uh, guess. Um, and that, that was the, the concern that was raised by the other side's, uh, traffic expert, um, uh, Mr. Bubares. And so, and he even testified that his concerns about traffic safety, that was their expert, the expert testimony was, "Our concerns about traffic safety will be rectified if you prohibit left turns out of the site." If you can, and I think you were just, yeah, and this, uh, if you pause it for a second. So we're, we're gonna play for you, uh, three clips from that, was it June 3rd? Public hearing, maybe Emma, when they start, if you want to tell them the time so that they have the time. Thanks.
Sure. So this first clip is about one hour and fifty-three minutes into the June 3rd meeting.
My second question, if you make the Eastern Drive right turn only and the Western, uh, uh, right turn only, or just exit only, would that eliminate the substantial threat to public safety, in your opinion?
Yes.
And that's, that was Commissioner Levy asking Mr. Bubares. Next clip from Mr. Bubares.
This one is one hour and fifty-nine minutes into the June 3rd meeting.
In my professional opinion, and I'll say it again, the East Drive should be right turn out only, also inbound, and right turn out only. The West Drive should continue to be right in, right out. That will make a better situation overall than-
And then fin, finally, a clip about, uh, OSTA's, uh, review.
This one is two hours and one minute into the June 3rd meeting.
They will impose certain requirements on the developer in order to make the situation safe and to make it flow right.
So, so, so that, that was their, their own expert said, if you, if you just eliminate the left, it'll be safe. And it's gonna go through, oh, so that was the last clip, and they're gonna impose certain requirements on the developer in order to make the situation safe and make it flow, make the traffic flow, uh, right.
And I would encourage the commission, if you're gonna rely on that, to review the entire transcript, the entire video of that.
Certainly. Um, the, um, at, at, at Mr., at Mr. Green's request, really, and, and then the commission's request, we did update the traffic report, which you just heard about, showing what would happen if you eliminated, uh, left onto the Post Road. And when you do that, that, uh, the hundred and, what would have been a hundred and eighty-second delay are showing as a hundred and eighty-second delay going left on the Post Road, dropped down to about a forty-five second delay, turning right onto, uh, Old Post, cutting out over two minutes of delay. Uh, on that original plan that we proposed to you, we did look at that operational, we looked at that left and how it would function, and we felt that by, that we would be keeping the traffic and the delay on-site, uh, and that that would be, uh, better received by, uh, the commission and the public. Um, but we were happy, we were happy to look at it with the closing the left. Uh, we think either way works under the eight dash thirty G standard. Um, and, and we did, uh, in Mr. Opalyn, uh, Opelinski, in Mr. Olinski's, uh, updated analysis, um, he did, um, he did, and the appendix does have the, there's, there's questions about intersections two, four, and six, uh, that came up from, uh, Mr. Green tonight. He, uh, much of the analysis that was discussed is in that report. Some of it, when you start talking about going further out through Fairfield and analyzing four-way stop signs on, on, on Old Post, is just outside of the scope of the study area. Um, and you wouldn't do that in a, in a traffic report, and the scope just report was never objected to by the, uh, engineering department. The, um, the, additionally, on that same sort of topic, the, the issue about whether, uh, delayed equals a safety hazard or not. And I, and I, I think what Neil and Mr. Olinski's point was, you know, if you took Post Road at this location and you made it twelve lanes wide, you'd have like level of service A everywhere. It would be just beautiful. It'd be perfect for level of service, but it would be about the most dangerous scenario you could imagine. Uh, cars would be flying in every direction. No one could cross. That would be a very unsafe condition, yet it would show a level of service A. And so I think his point was really that, that, that the level of services don't equate to a safety issue or not. You could have a safety issue with the level of service A, you can have a safety issue with the level of service F. They're not the same thing. They are, they are in fact, uh, different. The, um, again, i- i- if, if you want to eliminate the left out, we're okay with that. Uh, obviously, we have to be subject to OSTA's review and, um, uh, approval. The, again, uh, we can go to the next slide. Again, again, we, we, you've seen this, we've gone through it now twice already, but, but again, those are the solutions to the purported issues with the project, and I don't agree that they were issues, but we've proposed solutions with, with conditions of approval that we get engineering sign-off, and if necessary, a no-left-out, uh, onto, uh, Post Road. Those were the substantive concerns raised on the eight dash thirty G, the effectiveness of the stormwater system and the left turnout. Um, and, and so I sort of end where I started, uh, way back, uh, a month or so ago, was that we prefer the mixed-use development. That's our preferred, uh, option for this site. Uh, we think it's better for us. We think it's better for the neighbors. We think it's better for Fairfield. Um, but we, we presented you with this eight dash thirty G. It complies with the, the standards under eight dash thirty G, and we would ask that you simply treat us fairly under the law uh, and approve the application with the conditions, if any, that you deem necessary. Um, I think, but that was sort of the end of my prepared remarks. I will say in response to a couple of the, I tried to address some of the comments that came up just now. One that it was not was that the, the, the ITE numbers, if you want to hear it from Neil, you can't, but the ITE numbers, uh, that when you use for traffic generation, right, they take into consideration not just the, like, for an apartment building, it's not the car for each apartment owner, it's the traffic generated by that type of apartment building, and that's how you come up with your vehicle trips. That includes everything. That's deliveries, that's employees, that's guests. It's not just residents, so of course, all of his numbers take all of that into consideration, because that's what the IT does for all of these sites. I think, and I, so I think that's all that I have. If there are questions that you think you have to need to be addressed by myself, Neil, Rob, or anyone else from the team, we can answer. Otherwise, we would be, uh, we'd rest.
Commissioner Braun?
Yes, um, is it your contention that missing information or inadequate information is not a basis to deny an eight thirty G? Because I see a few instances that were disclosed, either, um, uh, the experts that the neighbors hired. I don't think it's been fully answered tonight. I can give you examples, but, um, are you, is it your contention that an eight thirty G, we have to approve it, even if there's missing information that we would need to know to show that it's gonna be a safe application that won't harm the public?
Uh, I think we believe that the information we provided is adequate to make that determination. It suffices under your regs and eight dash thirty G. Um, you, you can always claim that, that you need more information or want more information or want something explained, and that can kind of go on forever. I think the information we've provided is, is sufficient, and we, and we sort of would rest on that.
Well, okay, so I'm just going back to the soil issue. So tonight, we got some letters in the record, as well as the gentleman who spoke before, and also the CAM report indicates that there might be wetland soils on here, inland wetlands, and that's not been resolved.
That, that, that has been resolved. You're in the- because you're in the wetlands department, signed off that there are no inland wetlands.
But then they, I, I saw a letter from Tim Bishop saying there might be wetlands, and he'd like to, uh, it wasn't resolved. As far as, I, apparently something was done, and they found wetland soils. I, I don't know. The report the gentleman mentioned tonight, I haven't seen that, but, um, the CAM report indicated there might be inland wetland soils, and then somebody asked Mr. Bishop that, like, recently, and, um, my recollection is he, he wasn't clear, and that hasn't been resolved, but if no one did testing for wetland soils, how would we know that there's no inland wetland soils? In which case, they would need an inland wetland permit, but that's one issue. Let me just, the other one is, Mr. Trinkus last time stated that, um, he, he did not believe the testing that was done with our town engineer was, was adequate, and also that the calculations that were used showed, um, a different infiltration rate, because it was based on sandy loam rather than silt, which makes it faster rather than slower, and that, uh, the system would overflow. And then you would have, um, you know, dirty water flowing into, uh, the tidal water body. Also, that the nitrogen would not be cleansed because it's not the right type of system. You need a wet system instead of a dry system to get the nitrogen which comes off the roof. So those are kind of missing information things that I don't think have been answered. So is it your contention that if there's missing information, we still have to approve it? Even if somebody testified that missing information is needed to prove that the system will work?
So just for the record, Brian Carey, professional wetland scientist with Land Tech, on behalf of the applicant. Um, the reason why we're in front of zoning is because there is a step process that we do have to get a review, uh, and sign off by conservation, or else we would have had to go in front of the inland wetland commission. So I'm not really sure where that's coming from. I haven't seen any type of written information in the record. That's been presented to Tim, from Tim Bishop, the conservation director. We had in-depth discussions with him prior to filing for planning and zoning. Um, as far as soil testing, we did perform extensive soil testing, um, within the, the Connecticut general statutes, uh, twenty-two A, uh, twenty-two A dash thirty-six and twenty-two A dash fifteen, dash forty-five, which is the method to identify inland wetland soils on the property. Uh, there was a comment earlier this evening about there being Westbrook muck on the property, which is a tidal wetland soil. Uh, that material is downslope and is not within the, uh, upland area where the development were to take place. If, if we were to develop, do development in the area where there's Westbrook muck, we would require a tidal wetland permit from the state of Connecticut. Uh, obviously, the CAM has been reviewed. Two separate CAMs have been reviewed for the property. Both have been signed off by the DEP. Um, so I'm not really sure where there's some hearsay, uh, being presented. One of the things that, uh, the NRCS map is the guidance document. It is, it is mapping that's done on a level, uh, that is much larger than can be confirmed. Uh, that needs to be confirmed with a field survey, which is what we've done. So when you look at the site plans that were developed as part of the application, you will see the individual flag wetland line that is backed up by our soil scientists report that was done by, uh, Connecticut registered soil scientists. So, uh, I don't leave any of that to be missing information in the record. It's all been presented. It's all been presented to the conservation department. Um, and if, if, if there was any, uh, any misinformation, we would have had to go in front of the wetlands commission. So to say that there's missing information right now at this point is just not true.
I'm, I'm gonna ask Ms. Harrigan, because I saw some emails. I thought they just came in, like, I don't know, a few days ago, a, a back and forth, because somebody said the CAM report, um, I don't have it in front of me. It indicated there was an inland wetland, and then there were some emails back and forth. Was, was that answered? Is that, am I remembering that the right way? I saw that. I don't have it in front of me now.
Um, so Emmeline Harrigan, for the record, with Plan and Zoning Department?
There was an email that came in today from an adjacent resident who indicated that it was their understanding that there was inland wetland soils on the property. On the cam report that was submitted by DEEP, I believe that they erroneously indicated inland. They indicated freshwater resources, and I believe that they marked that incorrectly. It was not indicated in the narrative that they provided. This was subject to code review and at that time, our conservation commission director, Tim Bishop, indicated that he had no jurisdiction. Because there were no inland wetlands, so I, I believe it was an error by D E P in the report that they sent back to us. And I indicated that in response to the person who sent the email. As well as a link to the survey by Land Tech. And as well as the cam report that they did, which was certified by their own wetland scientist.
So the survey by Land Tech was a title wetland survey right down by the edge of the water? That's offsite.
So that's, yeah, our, our normal standard is if we go out to a site, we will delineate both title and inland wetlands. If they are present at that time, we don't just pick one or the other, we look at the soils. And the soils, there's different classifications of soils for title, there's different classification of soils for inland wetlands. There's also vegetation that's looked at during title wetland. We, 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 all we saw out there was dominantly is, is title wetlands associated, there's no inland wetlands within the scope of the project.
Okay, thank you.
Early reviewed.
Do you have other questions, Attorney Braun, of, of missing information, mentioned?
I'm trying to remember the traffic, Attorney Green said something, I'm gonna, I don't.
Well, not just about the traffic, cause you mentioned something about two things on engineering, I thought.
But one was the calculations using. The wrong. If they use the wrong type of soil, I guess, in their calculations, then the infiltration rate will be different than what they're saying. And it will go down too slowly from what their, what their conclusions are based on. So that was another issue that Mr. Trinkows had mentioned. As well as there would be overflow on top of the gallery, there's a pipe that's not connected. The nitrogen that comes off the rooftops is a pollutant that cannot be treated based on the system they have, so those are like several items that I don't think have been addressed.
Let's say, find those three things to you as much. The soil, the soil, the soil types is, is actually addressed in the letter from your engineering department. And that, that's what they, that's why they asked us to go out and do additional testing. As a condition of approval to confirm the, the permeability, that's that same, that's the issue that we've been talking about.
Okay. Okay, well, I guess, I guess I'll have to look at the record and, and understand that better. Because that, my recollection is it wasn't dealt with, so.
Anything else, Commissioner Braun, or can I go to Commissioner Randolph, do you have a question?
That's fine, thanks.
Hey Randolph.
Um, these are traffic questions for Mr. Olinsky. Mr. Olinsky, are you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, yep.
I, I'm just going to read these questions out and then you can respond to them, so. And they're repeats of what we just heard from the audience, I think some of them have been addressed and some of them haven't, but. Number one, if you don't respond to them, write them down and then you can respond to them all together. Have changes been considered regarding the surrounding improvements, and I know King's Highway. Is, is being approved to the east as well as what we call the peanut, the roundabout. Uh, question number two, uh, the traffic, the background traffic for B of A that we approved last week. Uh, I'm not sure if you are aware of that project or that's, whether that additional traffic from that approval has been considered.
I only go one at a time because we can.
Okay.
That makes a little more sense, I think.
Sure, so, so what? Go, go, go ahead, you can start with the first one then, has, have the, I think you addressed that the, the changes to the roundabout have been addressed. Have the changes to King's Highway to the east, have those been considered as well?
Yes, they have, the King's Highway jug handle. Town project is, it's not essentially, not really going to change much at all, it's just essentially removing where King's Highway. Intersects Post Road to the east, it's moving it to the east. From a traffic control standpoint, it's going to have very little change if at all, so yes, it is taken, it is taken into account. In our analysis, and to the extent that ConDOT wants to drill down on anything. More specifically, in terms of looking at whether a signal might be warranted there, that's all going to get played out during their approval process. Cause Post Road is Route one thirty, it's their jurisdiction, so as part of the ConDOT O S A approval process, that'll get looked at even more, but yes, to answer your question.
Thanks, question number two. Last week, we approved a conversion of the Bank of America, which is about, I don't know, it's about. I don't know, a short distance, maybe a thousand feet from the entrance of the proposed project. It's on the north side of, of the circle. Was, was that project taken into consideration? And if not, how would you take that into consideration?
So it's a re, reapproval of a, a reapproval of a former bank, so the bank had traffic out in the, in the system in the past. So in terms of the net, again, I don't know the details of that development because it's so new and our, we've been looking at this, our traffic report for over a year, so. It, they'd be going on in parallel, so we. We didn't fully take it into account, O S A will make us take a look at it if they deem it. And it important enough, quote unquote, major traffic generator, but it's probably not going to be. Cause it, it's a site that had a former use on it before with traffic in the past. So when you look at the bank's traffic versus whatever's going to go there now, the bank, bank's former traffic, that net change in traffic is probably going to be pretty minimal. To the roadway system at large, it's not going to have much of a change, our, our findings.
Excuse me ma'am, please.
Oh, but my next question is, I know we talked a lot about cars coming in and out of the site. There was also a question, and I think this was partially answered regarding other vehicle types, school buses and food delivery trucks. Were those taken into consideration in your traffic analysis?
Yeah, those are part of the I T E total trip generation estimates, so those are in the mix, when we look at the traffic estimates, we talk about a hundred new trips. That includes all kinds of trips, not just resident trips, includes your handful of delivery trips, many which happen off peak periods anyways, so.
Next question, so one of the. Most difficult parts of the traffic situation here is the diversion of traffic off of I ninety-five. Which happens, I guess on an irregular basis, but frequently. So it's not a predictable, it's not something that happens in a predictable fashion, but it does happen with some regularity. When doing your traffic, did you do traffic counts for this that would have picked that up? And what's, what's your response to the increased volume? Cause there will be an increased volume coming out of this building and its impact upon backups from I ninety-five being diverted.
Well, ultimately, we have to do, especially with large projects like this, we have to do what ConDOT's. Their procedures require, and they don't require us to take into account traffic crashes on I ninety-five, which secondarily reroute traffic onto other roads. That's not an everyday occurrence, though it may happen with quote-unquote some regularity, doesn't happen every single day. And ConDOT's not going to make us analyze, you know, halftime at Super Bowl, because it happens once a year. It's an unfortunate thing that happens in a, you know, Fairfield County in a very congested area at large, but. We don't look at those types of conditions, because they affect everybody as well, it's not just this, they affect the entire town. But they don't happen every day, so conduct doesn't make us analyze those types of situations in our typical traffic studies.
My last question, and this, this is one that's, I think, been a focus. I know we hear people are driving too fast, traffic is too slow. Those two things obviously are occurring. But the main question is level of safety. Le- level of service on how that relates to safety, you partially addressed that, but if you could elaborate on that, because that seems to be. The crux of most people's concern, that the level of service has been reduced, but does that impact safety? And I, I think there was a general reference to I T E that said it did, could you please address that question?
Thanks for asking that question, glad you, glad you brought it up, so there is, the traffic engineering profession is continuing to evolve, it's um. It's only about a hundred years old, the profession itself, it continues to evolve. And there's a misconception between levels of service, which are very much a measure of motorist delay. There's a misconception that, that equates to safety, and Attorney Blank gave a great example. One way, so we had in our original traffic study, the level service F projected to the left out of the site. If there is a scenario where you could theoretically widen Post Road from four lanes. Or three lanes, four lanes to six lanes. That would actually make that level service F taking a left out of our site, get better to a level service C. But clearly, that would come with safety, negative safety implications, because if you widen Post Road to six lanes. You would have speeding, much more speeding out there than you have today, particularly during off-peak periods. And when you increase speeding, when, when traffic crashes inevitably occur, they're just much more severe with speeding. So you cannot simply say level service equates to, to safety, they're not one of the same. What we do look at in terms of safety is providing safe facilities like a sidewalk and looking at things like. And including motorist sightlines, making sure that they can see far enough to make a determination if there's a gap in the traffic on Post Road. Can they adequately turn out of the site, which we can, we will have adequate sight distances. Meeting Connecticut DOT's highway design manual criteria for the speeds out there now. Hope that answered your question.
Commissioner Harrison, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, and I, I just, first of all, I do, I just want to thank Attorney Blank, Attorney Green, the public and everyone for a very respectful and professional deliberation. I know these things are contentious and the public, of course, so I, I just want to say I really appreciate that, this has been a, I think, a very, you know, good exchange of, of thoughts and, and whatnot. Mr. Olinsky, apologies, just bear with me if you don't mind. So I'm going to be referencing the map that, with the green and the numbers, one, two, four, five has the numbers on it. I just want to make sure that you see that as well, I know I'm, I'm remote.
How about the numbers with the, by the intersections?
Yeah, Circle diner driveway, Circle hotel driveway. Um, are, are you there, I just want to make sure that you're there.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, yep.
Sorry, okay, sorry, I just want to make sure.
Go ahead and start, we're getting, we're throwing up here, but go ahead and ask your questions.
No, 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 I just want to make sure that he, he was with me, so did you, so I just want to make sure, so. It seems to me that everyone would be going out of the diner driveway and taking a left and then a right towards the circle. They would go to number two and then to six, I guess, what impact will that be? And, and I just want to make sure I'm correct.
So they would not be taking a left out of the Circle diner driveway, they would be taking a right out there. And then a right at the old Post Road stop sign approach to Post Road. Then they would, which is where there's, they would, in, in that egress from a right. Out of Old Post Road to Post Road, you're looking to your left to make sure there's gaps in traffic. It's not necessarily merged, it's a stop controlled approach from Old Post Road. And then to get to intersection number six, you go. Over and you take a left at a yield sign, now the yield sign cannot be fully analyzed using what is called highway capacity manual. Capacity analysis techniques, which is what ConDOT requires us to do, so we look at traffic signals and stop signs, but not yield. Now, everybody knows from the MetroCog study, you can reference that from six years ago, that the entire Post Road has, has issues out there that now. But we're not going to be exacerbating them based on all, everything we looked at. Hope that answered your question, again, looking at all this, they are going to take into account those movements. And that might be a reason they might end up saying, well, you know, at the end of the day, we considered both scenarios and we actually don't want to put. Or we don't want to get rid of the left up to Post Road for just that reason. So they might end up sticking with the, the left turn out to Post Road. And then, then subsequently looking at whether or not a traffic signal would be warranted. At that spot instead, so we'll have to see how it plays out at state level during the O S A approval process.
Okay, and, and you feel that's, that's safe and there won't be any issues?
Correct.
Okay, okay, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Olinsky, for the, the second, as was described earlier for today, Plan B, so to speak, prohibiting the left-hand turnout. Did you do a thorough analysis of Plan B in all respects that you would for a regular traffic study?
We did, yes, and I think it was, it was mentioned earlier that we didn't look at queuing, we did, that's part of the analysis from the stop sign analysis. It's in the appendix of that Plan B memo.
When you say queuing, do you mean stacking, or is that similar?
Yep, stacking at the driveway exits.
Your analysis of onsite stacking or queuing, you've done that?
Yes, sir.
Done a full impact and, for again, Plan B, full impact and traffic count on Old Post Road as far as exiting the site?
Yeah, it's all in there, yep.
I think you answered what the fourth question, analysis to merge to left, I guess that's between when, if you go back to that. Can you go back to that drawing, please?
Sure.
Between two and four, when they veer off to the left. You were, is that what you were talking about earlier, is not being able to do an analysis at that site because it was a yield sign?
Well, there's, there's two different things, so the merge, quote-unquote merge is as part of the stop sign approach movement. Cause it's all part of, it all comes down to looking at a gap in the, the eastbound Post Road traffic at that spot, so that is taken into account in the, the intersection two analysis.
You're talking about, I'm talking about the merge between two and four, where two and four go into number six, that's what you're talking about?
In that, well, that's, I'm talking about between, right around just to the east of two. Now, when you get to that, what you just talked about between two and four going to six, that's a, essentially a yield sign movement. Which just not simply analyzed in terms of level service based on the highway capacity manual software. That ConDOT requires, in terms of, in terms of giving you levels of service outputs. That, that said, ConDOT's not going to just ignore it, they are taking that, they will take that into account still.
But those two spots that you just identified, you've analyzed them to the best that you can, one of them was yield. But you don't believe, your analysis took that into consideration to the best as it could? Found no safety issues there?
No.
Did you, as far as queuing onsite with parked cars trying to leave their parking? The thought being, I guess, if people, if cue, if the, if the cars are stacking, will the people who are parking there be able to get out?
Well, it, it depends on what scenario we're looking at, but there's not going to be a whole lot of queuing onsite, I think the worst case would be the left out. If we retain that to Post Road during the morning peak hour, which would be around six, seven vehicles. At worst, like we're talking ninety-fifth percentile queue, which might only happen one to two times during the peak hour, so on average, the queue would be less than, less than that, maybe around three to four vehicles. To take a left, turn lane exit, which is simply not going to block a lot of parking.
Well, let's assume, let's assume the second Plan B. So there's no left-hand turnout of the east one and everybody's going to the west in order to make their way. West on Post Road. If there is any queue there, say it's going to be limited, but would that prevent people who are parking there from getting out?
No, no, I don't believe so, because that would be even better, because when you get rid of the left turn, you, you do have better. Queuing, so to speak, lesser queuing, because taking a right turn is just easier than taking a left. I think at, the Old Post Road, or the site driveway exit, Old Post Road, we're talking about a few vehicles at, at, at busiest, at the stacking and the queuing there.
Thank you.
On site, you're welcome.
Commissioner Collins?
Um, I'm not sure if Mr. Olinsky or yourself can, what is the, I don't see anything on previous drawings on the, the public transportation bus stop that's right before the circle. How, did your traffic study put into, into. Theory of that, that there'd be buses stopping and picking up. People there, I mean, I live near there and, and it's quite a, quite a popular bus stop for the people that work at Stop and Shop and the other stores. And I don't see it on any of the.
Yeah, I know.
Study.
I, I, I'll let Neil answer that, I know.
I I'll let Neil answer that. I know for the rest of the development itself, we should take into consideration the retention of the bus stop.
You're taking it into.
Yeah, but I can let Neil speak to the traffic purposes.
Yeah, that's correct. And we did take into account, we know it's there. And I think we even had a recommendation on our our Plan A traffic study, for example, to convert that bus stop to a shel, putting a shelker there. Now, it's going to probably want to get moved a little bit away from the circle, so shifted a few hundred feet by ConDOT to get it a little bit further away. Ultimately, it's part of the the larger circle reconfiguration. But yes, we did take it into account and it's going to be, it's going to stay in the essential, essentially the same vicinity at the very least. Yes, we're going to have sidewalks, longer frontage, improved sidewalks too, which should make it even better for people taking the bus and walking.
Thank you. And you took into account that the the time that the bus stops picking up the passengers and cars going around that and having somewhat of a blind spot? Or a car maybe turning out?
Yeah, I mean, well, when we look at things, we look at it from a full hour basis in terms of levels of service. So the buses, I don't know off the top of my head, the frequency of the bus routes that stop there, but they may only stop once or twice an hour. So we're only talking about, you know, depending on the number of people getting on board. It's a, it's a very quick thing, so it is taken into account.
You had, you had the bus schedule put into the traffic study?
We looked at it. I don't recall if we put in the appendix, but we definitely did look at it, yes.
But it's not in the traffic study?
Well, again, it's such a minor thing, because the buses only come a couple of times an hour during peak hours, if I'm not mistaken. We're not talking about a bus frequency of five, 10 minutes, so they're coming.
So what, what are the hours of the bus? What are, what are they if you, if you think they only come a couple of times?
Well, I have to look and refresh my memory, because we started this study process nine months ago. But um, hold on one second, I can get it for you. I know it's on Google Maps these days too, if I'm not mistaken.
I assume that's something we can get online.
Yeah, so the coastal link, you know, if you look at their schedule, it comes twice an hour. So we're talking two buses during the peak hour, which only are going to be stopped for half a minute. It has very little impact on the entire hour's peak level service for the entire hour. We're talking about one minute, for example, in total, that the bus is going to be there. One to two, during the entire sixty-minute period.
One minute of of, is that what, how many passengers getting on or if they're elderly or something like that? I don't really get that. Well, how do you get?
Which, I mean, the bus, I mean, did you look at, you could just look at a bus. Yes, an elderly person, they might need to have the the arm go down, so it takes a little time, the bus.
I live right near there. I do look at it.
So do you have, do you have the data? How long, how long does it?
There's elderly people that need help getting on, which means there's a whole, there's, you know, people with a walker, so they have to put the bus down. Get the person that's not in it. There's people, you know, different shifts from Stop &amp; Shop. And there's, they they do hire some senior citizens and things like that. People crossing the street to get there.
Good, we're talking about a fraction of the entire hour. So even if the bus is there for three, four minutes, it's still only a a small portion of the entire hour that we looked at. So it doesn't have a significant effect on the traffic findings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olinsky.
You're welcome.
Final questions? Blank, anything further?
Uh, just just point out, I think the the bank conversion that was talked about, the current, a bank, current banks' peak hours are sort of morning and afternoon, which kind of mirror where our peak hours are. Turning to a restaurant where their peak hours are going to be in the evening will actually be helpful to our development, because they're, they're complimentary uses. They're not going to compete for for road space at the same time. Um, and and the the bus is is sort of an existing condition, and I think Mr. Olinsky rightly pointed out, it's when you're looking at a peak hours, it makes up a a small fraction of it, whether that's a minute or four minutes or six minutes. It's a small fraction of the of the hour, uh, so it doesn't, it it doesn't significantly alter the numbers. That's, that's all I wanted to add.
All right, I think we're all set then. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I'll close the hearing on this matter. Thank you again for the professional discourse from everybody. I will call the next item, because I understand Attorney Fallon. You've got three, three, eight Commerce Drive?
I do, sir.
How long do you think you have for that?
I'm willing ten minutes.
I thought this was a matter, I'll call this matter, I'm not sure who's staying and who's going, but I think that will be enough time to. Uh, three, three, eight Commerce Drive, special exception application of Hyundai dealership pertaining to a new location of a Genesis Sales and Service Facility in the Dot Design Industrial District, Commerce Drive Area Design District.
Good afternoon, good evening. Blinds together. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission for the record. My name is John Fallon. I'm here tonight representing the applicant. With me is Mr. Jim Belize, who's the President and CEO of Belize Motor Sales, and Mr. Brian Baker, who's our Professional Engineer and is the Director of Engineering for Civil One. Let me give you a brief overview. In July of twenty twenty-four, uh, you approved a special exception in coastal site plan approval with regard to this property uh, to establish a new location of a Genesis Sales and Service Facility at that property. The property, as you know, is located in the Design Industrial District and the Commerce Drive Area Design District. The application is approved, called for the demolition of an existing structure located on the property as part of the new proposed work to accommodate the Genesis dealership. Uh, that structure is currently occupied by various tenants, although I think most have vacated at this point, and I'll elaborate on that in a second. However, good news here, which I think the town is very excited about, we've been working with Mr. Barnard very closely since your approval in twenty twenty-four. We have been able to secure the property located down the street, so to speak, at twenty-six Commerce Drive for purposes of establishing that new Genesis facility at that location. Uh, that application will be made shortly, and of course, we'll be coming to you for full review. This new location in this area of our town where we have established a strong presence of automobile dealerships will provide us an opportunity to establish a very beautiful new Genesis dealership at this location at twenty-eight Commerce or twenty-six Commerce Drive. And it'll allow us, which is good news, good news, to be able to maintain the current Hyundai dealership, which we have at three thirty-eight. The existing building at three thirty-eight that was originally scheduled to be demolished will be now retained. With regard to the overall application, we'll continue, as I say, to operate the Hyundai dealership at this location. As we saw this turn of events, it it became clear to us that we had an opportunity to improve the site and the site plan at the existing dealership by providing additional parking for customers, service vehicles, and inventory. The proposal that's before you tonight will, in fact, add one hundred and fifteen additional onsite parking spaces uh, to complement the Hyundai dealership. In addition, the new configuration of the site, and Brian will review it with you momentarily, uh, allows us to provide and ensure that all delivery of vehicle inventory will now be made without any obstruction of Commerce Drive. We'll be able to take all of our deliveries onsite. With regard to the building that was to be demolished, that we're now going to maintain, there is one existing second-floor tenant, uh, JoJo, uh, which I believe is a martial arts tenant. They have a lease, which obviously we're honoring. The other tenants had on both the second and first floor have vacated the premises. We are not planning to put new tenants in the building. We are going to devote the building to be maintained now uh, to our Hyundai dealership, parts and storage, a possible overflow showroom and the like. So before I summarize, I would just like to have Brian give you a brief overview of the site plan that is mounted on the screen and that is part of the application. And then I'll have a few closing comments.
Brian, thanks. Uh, for the record, Brian Baker with Civil One, Licensed Engineer in the state of Connecticut. Um, so we were here about a year ago. Um, it presented you the previous plans you approved. You see, this will look similar, but different in the aspect that previously this section of the building, this building was going to be removed and we're going to have the new Genesis dealership in this location. Um, so the building is is to remain and we've added additional parking and vehicle inventory spaces here. Uh, we do have the delivery truck turning movement that goes through the site. So it will be, uh, go through the site, straight throughout to Haley Court and leave. So the turning movement means we could do all the drop-offs deliveries onsite. One benefit of this modified plan is, under the previous plan, that there's also an existing curb cut at Haley Court here, close to the intersection. That was going to be used. We're going to cut that off now. Uh, so it's nice that we don't have a curb cut close to an intersection, so. Um, so that's an added benefit. Additionally, in comparison to the the previous plan, we kept all the stormwater design and management in place. But we're actually reducing the impervious surface by even more with this layout, because of the additional landscape islands and parking layout the way it is. So currently, in the area that's being developed here, there's one five, eight acres of the of the total site. Currently, ninety-four point nine percent of that is impervious. And with the proposal, we'll be dropping that down to eighty-three point two uh, percent impervious, so about, you know, almost two tenths of an acre uh, less impervious surface. Um, and we do have stormwater systems in place, uh, that are going to be installed. There's an infiltration bed uh, here adjacent to Commerce Drive and in a larger bed in the back, the site generally pitches mostly back into this area. Again, we were providing decreases for all design storms and we meet the engineering department's criteria of the ten-year post-development storm being less than two-year pre-development storm. Uh, so overall, we we meet all the criteria. Uh, we have less impervious surface than was previously approved. Um, and then we did, of course, update the landscaping and lighting plan. Some of the lights had moved, but we provided with the, you with the full photometric study showing we have dark sky compliant, full cutoff light fixtures, no light trespass onto any other property. And the, because we have a little more pervious surface or landscaped area um, from the previous plans, as far as trees and shrubs go, uh, we have Bill Kenny's plan here. Um, previously in the plan, we had eighteen shade trees that goes up to thirty-four. And previously, there were forty-seven shrubs and that's bumped up to seventy-two. So we've kept that density of planting, but since we have more planting area, we have more, we have more plants.
Thank you, Brian. Bill Kenny, if anybody has any specific questions about the landscaping plan, I is is with us online, I believe. Uh, two other matters that you approved as part of the last application, which we'd asked you to do again. Uh, when you approved the Genesis facility pursuant to Section thirteen thirteen P of the regulations, we requested and you approved lightful picture, light pole fixtures, excuse me, at a height of eighteen feet. Uh, you made this a condition of approval last year based upon the strong recommendations from our lighting consultant at the time uh, that approval of light poles at a height of eighteen feet was desirable in order to provide safe lighting for the site. Uh, that will ensure both customer convenience as security and security. This application is identical to that in that effect. And we, again, would ask pursuant to the provisions of the regulations that you establish a approval that allows the light poles to be maintained at eighteen feet. As Brian just indicated, we've done a full photo metrics and there will not be any off-site impacts with regard to that. And indeed, eighteen-foot light poles in my non-scientific experience is is quite common in this area of other car dealerships on the Commerce Drive, because it just makes sense, as I said, for safe and secure lighting. The second thing we asked you to do, and you agreed when you approved the Genesis facility, is to eliminate any requirement to construct a sidewalk on Commerce Drive. Those of you who were on the Commission at the time, remember, we had a discussion about this. We made that request and and you approved it then, and we asked that you reaffirm it now. Just by for background and by way of the record, what we established at the hearing in June of twenty twenty-four and the Commission concurred uh, that when the property was first approved for a Hyundai dealership in two thousand and nineteen, the Commission then determined that it would not be feasible to install sidewalks due to some significant limitations that applied. So you found that originally in nineteen, twenty nineteen, you reaffirmed that decision in twenty twenty-four. And we're asking you to reaffirm it as part of your decision here in twenty twenty-five. Just by way of reminder, those issues that led to those twice previous determinations not to require sidewalks on our frontage were that the sidewalk would extend nine feet onto private property, as noted by the engineering departments that they provided uh, in nineteen, twenty eighteen, at the time of the original twenty nineteen approval. Uh, there was also a determination that such sidewalks would eliminate the required five-foot landscape buffer between the sidewalk and the parking area, as required by Section thirteen three B. And as a practical matter, the closest existing sidewalk to the west that would then have opportunity to link up here would be over fourteen hundred feet away at the Black Rock Turnpike intersection. A sidewalk would cross four town roads and require sidewalk easements from eleven additional property owners. Similarly, the closest existing sidewalk to the east is four hundred feet away at the Brentwood Avenue intersection. Uh, and a future sidewalk connection would cross one town road and would require sidewalk easements in that direction from two additional properties. So all of these things were found that in addition to that, the installation of sidewalks on our frontage would directly indicate the location of existing utility poles. Uh, and a sidewalk already exists on the south of Commerce Drive in a town right away that runs from Black Rock Turnpike to one Commerce Drive, which is a stretch of over thirty-four hundred feet. So based upon all those factors, the engineering department in two thousand and eighteen determined that, I quote, sidewalks would not, should not be required as part of this proposal. You adopted that then in two thousand and nineteen. You reendorsed it and 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 established a condition not requiring sidewalks when our dealership improvements were approved for the Genesis facility in twenty twenty-four. And we're asking you to do that again tonight. So I just wanted the record to be complete with that. So by way of conclusion, um, we think this is a win-win situation. We found a great location for an exciting new state-of-the-art Genesis facility, which we're very excited to bring to you shortly. That has allowed us to maintain our existing location of the Hyundai dealership without Genesis being grafted there too. That has given us the opportunity to do the things that we are doing here by way of increasing parking onsite maneuverability for the vehicles. And as Brian's remarks made clear, we're doing all that and being able to reduce impervious services and it it significantly enhanced the landscaping from what was approved a year ago for the Genesis facility. So we're very excited about this application tonight. We hope you'll approve it. And we look forward to coming back to see you soon with regard to twenty-six Commerce Drive and the new Genesis facility. So we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have and appreciate your attention.
Questions? Mr. Randolph?
Um, just, I I'm looking at the street view. I just wanted to confirm you don't have any non-compliant monument signs? If you could confirm that, it looks like you don't.
We don't.
Okay, good. And uh, thank you very much for your thoughtful landscaping plan and um.
Mr. Kenny deserves, and Mr. Baker deserves the credit for that. And Mr. and Mr. Belize, obviously. He's paying for it. Yes.
Other questions in the Commission? Does it affect additional traffic onsite?
No, I mean, the only in its traffic impact is a very good one, and that is we now can accommodate full onsite delivery of all vehicle inventory without any, you know, disruption on Commerce Drive to take deliveries, so it's.
The extra space is going to be for parking inventory only.
Yeah, it's mostly from parking inventory, correct.
And then you lose the the traffic from the four old buildings that are being demolished. Now they're not generation, they're not adding traffic.
Plus, as I said, other than the one existing leased tenant, we're not going to be releasing that building. We're going to be using it for storage, perhaps an over full showroom, things of that nature. So we're actually probably going to reduce traffic.
Any other questions? Straightforward. All right, all set for the initial presentation, I think. Let's see what we have. I'll close the initial presentation portion of this application. Is there a member of the public that's joining us in person that wishes to be heard in this application? Seeing anybody. Is there a member of the public joining us remotely or by phone that wishes to be heard in this application? You're joining us by phone, please press star six to unmute yourself and identify yourself, please.
Last call for any member of the public in person, remote or by phone, wish to be heard in this application. Not hearing anybody, not seeing anybody in chat, Miss Harrigan, excuse me. So I'll close the public comment portion of the application. Anything further? It's good to have a ten minute public hearing. It's been a while. Thank you for that. I will close the hearing on this matter. Thank you. All right. I will let Commissioner Morcillo call the next items. I think they're mislabeled, but.
This one's.
Yeah, well. They are, yeah, six, seven and eight, always remade one oh eight Bay Road Street. I'll let you call it. I'm recusing myself on those matters. I think Attorney Ford is recusing himself as well. I think that's what he told me. Oh, he did say, okay, so I'll let him say if he needs to, but I'm recusing myself.
Um, who's who's in your place and Mr. Ford's place?
Well, it's not executive session yet, so.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. I'll call the next three items together. Zoning Regulation Amendment, application of attorney Steven Bellis on behalf of contract purchasers one oh eight Bay Road LLC. To create a new section five point three of the zoning regulations for a Bay Road Development District. One oh eight Bay Road Street Zone Change Application of Attorney Steven Bellis on behalf of contract purchasers one oh eight Bay Road LLC to establish a Bay Road Development District on land presently zoned residency. And one oh eight Bay Road Street Zoning Compliance Application of Attorney Steven Bellis on behalf of contract purchasers one oh eight Bay Road LLC pertaining to a new one hundred unit residential development pursuant to section eight thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes Residency Zone. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Are we hearing all these together?
Well, I my first question was going to be.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Of course, good evening, Attorney Bellis. So we have three separate items that the commission has to vote on. What was your intent as far as how these are going to be presented?
We're going to present them as one as one application or as one presentation with all the witnesses going forward here tonight.
Okay, so you have everyone.
Have everyone lined up.
Okay, all right, very good. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. For the record, I'm Attorney Steven Bellis. I'm with the Pellegrino Law Firm. I've been practicing about forty years. I do a lot of the zoning applications in different towns and I look forward to seeing you. I think not only on this application, but I think I have a few more that maybe I may be seeing you weekly. Having said that, as the chair stated, I represent one oh eight Bay Road LLC and they're a contract purchaser of the property known as one oh eight Bay Road Street. And that's owned by the Holy Family and Saint Emory Parish Corporation. I have submitted a lot of documents uploaded to the link. And one of them was the addendum of the contract. And that just states, the addendum just states that the parties are, in fact, the Holy Family is the owner, one oh eight Bay Road is the purchaser. And I can tell you that under that contract, the closing date is to be sixty days following the land use approvals or a final judgment from the court. So that's that's the applicant on all these matters. I usually like to start and it's sometimes this commission is very familiar with eight thirty G applications. Sometimes the neighbors aren't as familiar, so I won't go on too long, but I have a few remarks. One has been that there's lately Connecticut is experiencing a housing crisis. There's been reports to the legislature with statistics that have been backing that up. More recently, one of the one of the reports that came to the legislature, I helped work with drafting some workforce housing legislation for them. We had the distinction of being the tied for the worst with the state of Rhode Island with constrained housing supply in in the nation. So our vacancy rate is seven percent, if it matters to you all. Another report that does legislature shared with me was that they need a hundred and ten thousand more units of housing to meet the needs of our Connecticut residents. And the last one came out about a week ago. And that report and study was that there are seventy thousand positions statewide that need to be filled for employers and they can't fill it because of the lack of housing for the employees. According to this report, it's causing some of these companies to leave Connecticut and others are making a decision that they don't want to move their headquarters to Connecticut. I just share that information. I know Fairfield is well aware of what happens when a big company like GE leaves town. It hurts. I also know that the commission is familiar with the state law eight thirty G and you and neighbors and other towns don't like the state telling our local municipalities what to do about zoning in their own towns. It causes a lot of consternation. The trouble is that towns have no have no power on their own. They're they're creatures, according to the Connecticut Constitution and our Supreme Court, we're creatures of the state. Kind of funny wording, but basically what that means is that zoning power is not inherent and municipalities can only regulate land use under authority explicitly granted by the state. So the zoning commission powers are directly and solely from state statutes. And we all are familiar with the local zoning regulations under section eight of our statutes. And then all the towns have done a wonderful job making up beautiful regulations and doing zoning. And then the state can come in as they have under eight thirty G and say, well, that's all well and good. But we're going to let we're going to have this particular statute that allows for affordable housing. If your town doesn't have ten percent, it becomes non exempt. In the case of one thirty one Beach Road, which you're all familiar with, this court stated that the need for affordable housing has been persistent for decades in Fairfield. I submitted in the Connecticut data with the application. You're approximately at three point oh five percent according to that. I I bet it's ticked up because there's been so many applications, but you're not at ten percent. So there's no question that Fairfield is a non exempt town and has to abide by this eight thirty G statute. This application was filed before your moratorium. So there's no retroactive application of the.
I have a question.
Yes.
Got it, Commissioner Harrison.
Sorry, I I know I'm remote, so it's sometimes hard to see me raising my hand, so I apologize for being interruptive. So just going back to the housing need, you said a hundred thousand units?
Hundred and well, the legislature, the report was a hundred and ten thousand.
So that number is defined, though, as cost burden per the census. It's defined as household spending thirty percent of house and costs on rent, mortgage and interest, insurance, utilities, property taxes. I mean, you're not saying a hundred thousand people need a home in Connecticut, are you?
Yeah, that's what the report said.
Because I've seen reports too that say cost burden, but that doesn't mean they all need a place because we have a thing about what five thousand homeless people in Connecticut roughly?
I I I'm only sharing what the legislature has shared with me.
No, and I know some some outside groups put together those stats and I appreciate that. I just want to have a understanding. I mean, do we have a hundred thousand homeless people? Is that what you're saying?
I never said that.
Okay, well, I just want to understand this because I'm not really sure what you're saying, I guess.
Commissioner Harrison, could we, I think those are fair questions, but could we let Attorney Bellis finish?
Oh, yeah, certainly. Yep, yep.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
What was the name of that report that you mentioned that said we need a hundred thousand units and seventy thousand jobs are going unfilled because of housing? What was the name of and the source of that report?
I can get that for you. They were presentations that were made to the Connecticut Legislature. I think it was prior to them passing the bill that we had that's going to be coming. It's going to be coming down shortly, I think.
Yeah, five zero zero two.
Yeah, you got it. And I don't know whether that's going to be signed into law or not. I really don't know.
So we don't know. So this, did you have that report? Is that in the record?
No, I didn't submit the report in the record. I just submitted the fact that that's something that is has been reported to the legislature. I can get you the site if you need. It's not a big deal.
Okay, because there's a lot of things reported to the legislature.
Yeah. Yeah, no problem.
And again, the need, so Fairfield just got a moratorium, which indicates we've made significant progress. You're not saying we haven't made progress, right?
Not at all. You've made great progress because now you're going to have a four year moratorium.
No, for yeah, for and the ten percent is not a goal or a target. It's simply an amount that exempts towns from being subject to eight thirty G, correct? Mandate or quota, right?
Not at all.
Commissioner Brown, can we let Attorney Bellis finish his preamble and then get to questions?
Sure.
So as I said, this application was filed before the state granted this Fairfield a moratorium on eight thirty G applications. So the application that I have submitted, the first one is called a Certificate of Zoning Compliance. And that application is being presented under eight dash thirty G where we seek a hundred units with fifty four of them being one bedrooms and forty six being two bedroom units. There's a recreation room and a leasing office. Now, this application is in conjunction with what we call a set aside development, and that's set forth in our affordability plan. But as you all well know, the set aside development is one of the prongs of eight thirty G that an applicant can use. And on the set aside development, these thirty units would be designated as affordable with that term being defined by the statute for forty years. In this particular project, there's going to be a garage with two levels. And there would be eighty eight parking spaces on the lower level and seventy nine on the upper level totaling a hundred and sixty seven parking spaces. So in this certificate of zoning compliance, we submitted our affordability plan whereby fifteen of the units will be at eighty percent AMI and fifteen of the units will be at sixty percent AMI. Now, the administrator that we put was Mark Nolan. He's been recognized by several towns, at least the nearby towns that I remember him being as a qualified administrator is Stratford and Shelton. I think somebody from Code Review asked for his resume, so I happened to bring it. He's been an administrator for forty in the real estate with NP Rentals and Management for forty years. Registered and his specialty is the, among other things, deed restricted developments with Connecticut General Statute eight dash thirty G regulations and community affordability plans. And he's the one who would would be the person that would make sure that the people that are applying have the income levels that they're supposed to have. He would be the one that makes sure that the units that are designated are affordable, are rented as affordable. And then he would make those determination under the statute. So I can give this to, put it in the record. I don't know. Do I give it to Meline? I'm sorry, I apologize. Josephine. That's the resume of Mark Nolan. So we have also put in the record, I think the town likes to have a color coded where the affordable units are. So we've done that. You can look at that. It's on the floor plan to show what that they're going to be spaced throughout the building. They're going to be the same quality and be available at the same time as market rate units. You will not be able to distinguish them if you were to walk into a particular unit. So presently, there's a vacant school on the property. You're familiar with it, which will be removed. And the new building will look like the rendering. I don't know if Meline could just put up on the screen the exterior rendering. So you have a flavor for what the building looks like. Okay, so John Geddes is the architect of this building. And he's going to, when I'm done, tell us a little bit more about the building itself. Brian Nesteriak is the engineer, registered professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. He'll discuss the site. I have Paul Richter, who is one of the members of one oh eight Bay Road. He'll discuss the financial viability of the project, the need for a hundred units and why the building looks like the way it does. We went to code review and we have Joseph Verstig, who will testify that the building meets the safety codes. We also have Kermit Hua. He's here as a traffic engineer. His report and testimony will be that the traffic generated from the hundred units can be adequately and safely accommodated by the adjacent roadways and that the impact is limited. So those are going to be the people that will be presenting testimony. We submitted a report from Bill Kenny, who I just saw not too long ago on the screen. He's a soil scientist. There are no wetlands on this site. We have his report uploaded and Tim Bishop agreed that there was no need to have a wetlands hearing. We submitted the Will Serve Report from Aquarion. You're all familiar with that. That's where the water company tells everybody that there's sufficient water to meet the expected demands. We've also submitted two reports from our engineer, Brian Nesteriak, that there's adequate capacity to handle the sewage. Well, I want to talk a little bit about sewage, not not, you know, not the sexiest topic, but I think it's something that I think it's important for this commission to know. So we had a code review and then we submitted Brian Nesteriak's first report to the WPCA. And they had a meeting, I think it was May twenty first, where they had a consultant advise them that the capacity of the King's Highway pipe, that's the big thirty inch sewer main that goes down King's Highway, is according to this consultant, greater than eighty percent of capacity. That's what he told the WPCA. So the WPCA was telling us that they were not going to approve any additional flow for any development unless that developer had to replace the thirty inch pipe in King's Highway. We have, even though that was what I call a preliminary hearing, we did appeal the decision just to be on the safe side. And the appeal was directly on point with a case in Fairfield called, you're all familiar with it, fifteen Uncle Road. But there was two cases. There was your planning and zoning decision, but there was a WPCA case as well. And I'll mention that. I'll get to the cases in a minute. So what what happened here? I don't know what happened with that consultant. What I do believe happened was that there was an assumption made as to the slope of that pipe. And when you have different slopes, it changes the capacity. So if I were to use my pen here, if you have a slope where the pipe is basically level, then the pipe's going to fill up with water. If you have a pipe that has a slope like my pen being now, think of a water slide at one of the water parks. The water rushes through and shoots out the other end and then the pipe does not fill up. So we took, we meaning one oh eight Bay Road, after we had that meeting with the WPCA, we hired a surveyor and the surveyor went and he actually measured in two different locations downstream where our flow would be the slope of that particular pipe. And the slope was not what the engineer had told our, what the consultant had told our engineer of point oh five percent. That was a wrong assumption. Using the actual slope, you'll have capacity of about seventy percent. And I'll have Brian Nesteriak explain a little bit more about that. But the long and the short of it is there is certainly sufficient capacity in this pipe to take on the sewage from our project. And the reason I can say that is that there already was a pipe and sewage coming from the school for all of these years. The church used the school for many, many years. And I think the town of Fairfield leased it out more recently. And so it was actively being used. And the same pipes that are there for the church school will be used by this particular applicant. So the only issue was, was there actually an eighty percent capacity of the pipe in King's Highway? And I think the. And I think the answer um will be that it's not. And we're, we plan on going back to the WPCA, uh showing them the actual slope and having the engineers discuss it. And I'm pretty confident that um the uh uh there will not be, uh that we will be able to get uh WPCA approval. Why do I say that? Let's look at the case law. Um, if you mind, uh I'm lying, I I flagged a couple cases called sewer cases. Pull that up. I'm gonna be brief. I know that this is not an appellate court, so uh I'm not gonna bore you. Yeah, go to the second page. Or scroll down. Yeah, that, yeah, that's good. No, that's good. Up a little more, see if you can see it. Yeah, so this case um that she's showing you right now, I've highlighted in yellow is Fifteen Uncle Road versus Water Pollution Control Authority in town of Fairfield. It's a memorandum of decision, came out August twentieth, twenty twenty-four. And uh and uh basically what the court said was, hey, listen, WPCA, um you can't just make up a rule that eighty percent of capacity means that you can deny people's applications. It's an invalid policy and it had no lawful authority to apply it, and the appeal was sustained. So um, I think based on that case that the WPCA is going to have to either um relook at their uh figures or um will win on appeal. Um, the next thing, scroll down, next case is National Association. Some people are under the belief that you, as a matter of law, that an applicant has to have an approval from the Water Pollution Control Authority prior to seeking a zone change approval under eight thirty G. The court says, we disagree. So you don't need prior WPCA approval before coming to your commission. That's what that case holds. You can go to the next one. Uh, the next one is uh your case, meaning Fifteen Uncle Road and the Plant Town Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, that case was decided, I guess, also August twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Um, and what the court said makes sense, I think, in that case. It said that there, um obviously sewage is a uh public interest that needs protection. We all know that. Um, and you have to maintain adequate sewage. And what they basically said is you can make it a condition of approval that the applicant get WPCA approval. Um, that that would protect both the public because if you can't get WPCA approval, the zoning approval is useless, can't build the building. And if you do uh approve the project and you get WPCA uh 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 approval, then you're um uh I guess cooperating, it says, in affordable housing and blah, 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 as the case said. That case uh and the next one, that's CMB Capital, says the zoning commission is entrusted with large powers and they should be the agency to move first and they can make a decision uh as to the conditions under which to approve the project. So I'm telling this commission right here and now that if you are to approve this eight thirty G application, I have no problem with a condition of approval, meaning that we get WPCA uh approval for the sewage. Um, and that only makes sense if it protects you, it protects the town. And I think it um uh if it can be worked out, fine. If it has to go to court, that's fine. Uh, but obviously, I think that we have, at least as far as this commission is concerned, credible evidence that we're gonna be giving you that there is adequate capacity. Um, and I said, I think that this case, our case is um even supported more by the fact that there was a school there, we're using the same pipes. That school is now vacant and it's being replaced with another activity such as an apartment building using the same infrastructure. This is not the situation where someone has to build or put in new uh mains in the street. Uh, so I just want to make that clear.
Can I ask a question?
Uh, Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, go ahead.
There's a hundred units and how many bedrooms and how many dens?
I'm gonna have the um our our expert on that address all those kind of detailed questions.
Is he gonna talk about WPCA? Because my concern was-
Yeah, yeah, he's gonna talk about WPCA, yes.
Okay.
I'll give it an overview, right? And then I'm gonna have the experts go. I'm not an expert on WPCA.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks.
So in addition to a certificate of zoning compliance, we've also submitted a zone change and a proposed text amendment. Now, I recognize um that there's no requirement for a zone change application um that you could approve a a site plan under eight thirty G. But I think you know from the one thirty-one Beach Road case, which is also a Fairfield case, that um the applicant is statutorily entitled to seek a change in the zone and text amendment. Because in the statute itself, we says we have to give you a proposed text amendment. It's under eight thirty G. So a lot of times the attorneys just give you a proposed text amendment. So you say to me, why, why bother, Steve? The reason is, and it's very simple, that after you get an approval, the applicant wants to get financing. And so when it goes to the bank, it says, uh, oh, you're in an R, oh, you know, one zone. How do you have a hundred, a unit apartment building? And we say, well, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved it under eight thirty dash thirty G. What they like is to see the text amendment that backs that up and supports that zone change. And so therefore, the zone change is in conformity with a text amendment. That's why it's done. Um, uh, I want to be clear, because sometimes some of the lawyers get ripped up on their text amendments. It only pertains to this particular parcel. It doesn't apply to any other parcels in town. So the text amendment that I have requested is only for one oh eight Bayrow Street, okay? So that's why I said, it's not a big deal if you hear them all together. Basically, you're gonna be approving an uh an eight thirty G site plan under your certificate of zoning compliance. And if you so choose, you can approve the zone change with the text amendment that I wrote. That just makes it comply. That's it. So um, I think, let's, I think that's enough hearing for me. I'd rather us get to some of the experts tonight, if that's okay with you guys.
We have uh it's final four now. Uh, these meetings end at ten. Do you expect your-
Oh, I'll I'll leave at ten. Don't you worry. Yeah, I I'm not gonna make you stay.
Oh, well, we're not gonna stay. It's it's more a question of whether uh the public's gonna, uh, we're gonna get to any public comments.
I don't know. I don't, well, I don't, I don't think, uh, do I have my client? I apologize. Let me see the time. We're nine. Yeah, I think we're gonna get through it. Okay. So um, again, you know, I don't know how these go, right? Depends how many questions you ask and stuff.
Sure does.
Yeah. Uh. Okay, so I thought we'd start with John Geddes, the architect, if I can. I don't know how to do this. Um, he's online.
Writing remote. Uh, Mr. Geddes, can you?
Can you chew him up? If not, let me know.
Can you hear me?
Can hear you.
Well, we can.
All right, and for the record, I'm John Geddes. I'm with Geddes Associates. Um, I'm the designer of the building. Um, and I just wanted, uh, as uh Attorney Bellis uh indicated, um, we have a hundred units, of which uh fifty-four are two-bedroom, I mean fifty-four are one-bedroom, forty-six are two-bedroom. So there's a total of a hundred forty-six bedrooms. And with that, there's forty dens or offices that are part of the apartment space. Uh, this site was unique in the sense of its topography. There's a thirty, uh, I believe thirty-five foot difference in grade from Finch Street down to Bayrow and Haley. So in designing the building, uh what we wound up with is a uh street-level uh parking uh basically accessed uh from Haley and Bayrow. And within that space, uh we have, we introduce outside of the perimeter of the building the electric station setups for the electric cars. We also included a generator for the building to accommodate the elevators for the ADA compliance. We have a trash room, uh and we have other utility rooms with the, uh the garage is heading to it. The uh the next deck uh basically is uh we have a twelve-and-a-half-foot ceiling height on the first deck, the second deck. Uh, we basically have uh included the mailroom and a few other amenities such as a gym. Uh, we have a uh ramp that accesses the upper deck coming from Finch Street. And because, as I said, of the topography, the uh we set the first floor, residential floor, three-and-a-half feet below Finch Street. So the uh building height on Finch Street is fifty-one feet, six inches, whereas the uh at the rear, it's eighty-one foot, six inches. So there is a, as I said, a thirty uh foot difference in grade from Finch Street to the Burr Streets. Uh, the apartments are fairly typical. Uh, as I said, there's either two-bedroom or one-bedroom. Uh, with, in some cases where we had the extra room, we included a small office or den. Um, and there is on the fifth floor, a leasing office and a recreational, you know, room. Um, you know, but basically it's a pretty typical uh building. Uh, the building either has uh balconies or French uh doors uh on the exterior. So if you look at it, we have a combination of uh of stone and uh and uh cement siding finishes along with uh uh, you know, other, other, you know, pretty common features. Uh, the uh, the elevators and stairwell do go up to the roof, but it's only for uh utility purposes. Uh, due to the building height, there is no uh, there is no uh feature on the roof. We initially had a roof deck, but because of, and Mr. Bear Street can uh address that, but because of the code requirements, uh we eliminated any kind of uh, any kind of amenity on the roof. Um, so it's, you know, again, if you have any questions, I'll answer it, but that's pretty much the building uh design.
I have a question.
Um, and then Commissioner Harrison.
Mr. Geddes, uh, yeah, I saw the roof plan, but I didn't see any plans for what appears to be a cupola. Is that to shelter the elevator or what is?
Well, that, the cupola was a request made by the, the client.
Yeah, are there any plans for it? Uh, I didn't see it.
No, it's just, it's just a decoration.
Thank you, Commissioner Harrison.
I had a question, uh, Mr. Geddes. Um, what's the difference between a designer or an architect? Are you an architect?
No, I'm not a licensed architect. I've been designing buildings for forty-five years.
No, I I know that you've been in the business for a long time. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
Could you show us the rendering again of the building in context? I I'm trying to figure out the height of the building relative to the houses that are downhill from it. Yeah, where are the houses that are in the neighborhood, on the left or on the right? Where, what does our vantage point looking at it?
Well, I believe you can, you can see a house on the right side.
Isn't there a steep slope towards that house?
Well, uh Finch Street is level. Where where we have a topography, even the existing school, uh, if if uh if you've been by there, you'll see that the first floor of the school is is basically be- below the road. So if, as you can see, the main entrance of the building, it's set three-and-a-half feet below Finch Street. But there is a a grade differential and the site in generic can address that, but there is a differential from Finch Street to the back of about thirty feet.
I'm sorry, where's Bayrow Street on this rendering?
It's on the, uh, it's on the right side of the building.
So our vantage point where we're standing is where? We're on the uphill on Finch?
Yeah, but the, both, both Haley and also Bayrow do not come through to Finch.
Haley's on the left. Okay, you go.
Basically, Fin- Finch Street does not connect to Bayrow nor Haley because of the topography. So both Haley and Bayrow are dead-end streets.
So the entrance is on Finch, which is that road that goes sideways across the top above, above the-
Basically, if you're looking at the rendering, it's the street that goes right in front of the rendering.
Aren't there condos on Finch Street that goes across the top right there?
Not that I'm familiar with.
I've driven up there. We're at the top of Bayrow, there's other houses, right?
Yes, there's a-
Where are those in this rendering?
They, they're in back of the building. But you're looking at it's front of the building.
But we're standing on Finch, you're saying, right?
There's a, I thought it was Finch Street.
It is Finch Street.
Okay.
Finn and O Court joined together. On the left-hand side of that structure would be-
I'm sorry, we can't have, we, yeah, but thank you.
People don't understand what he's talking about because they're talking about the wrong streets.
I understand. We could correct that.
He should know, he designed it.
Ms. Mr. Geddes, uh, my hearing was Finch Street, which uh as far as I can tell is the correct street. So uh continue, please.
Well, I, again, I, from what I have is Finch Street is the front of the building. What we're looking at, at this rendering, is the street in front of the building is Finch Street. You cannot see the, the Bayrow nor Haley because they're thirty feet below uh Finch Street.
But isn't Finch Street the one that goes sideways connecting like Hallie to Bayrow?
No, uh, Bayrow does not. Bayrow's a dead-end street.
So this is above where Bayrow ends, right?
That's correct.
My recollection is that right above that school is a bunch of houses, um, like right above that. So I'm trying to figure out, is there a rendering or a map or something, a site plan that you could show us where this building is situated among all the houses around it on all the streets? Because I'm trying to understand that.
I would have to defer that to the site engineer.
Okay, well, that'll come up later. I have a couple other questions. Um. So the main entrance will be facing uphill. There will be no entrance on Bi- on on Bayrow Street or Hallie Street?
The entrance to the on-grade parking, which is below the building, will have access to both Bayrow uh and Haley.
So this will take up the whole block between Bayrow and Hallie? Okay, and what is the, the height differential between this building and the houses downhill on Bayrow and Hallie? Because when I've been on that road a few times, it's very, very steep.
I would imagine it's about fifty foot above those houses in the back.
I'm sorry, the height of this building is what again?
The back of the building is eighty-one feet.
The back of the building is downhill or uphill?
It's on the lower level.
So, it's so confusing that you-
Well, here, this is, what you have right now on the screen is the side view. Uh, and I believe this is the Haley side. And as you can see, the Finch Stri- Finch Street is on the right side of the building, uh, which is fifty-one foot in height. And then you have the, the back of the building, which is eighty-one feet in height.
The back of the building faces downhill on Bayrow and Hallie, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so-
Between the two streets.
One, two, three, four. That's five stories or six stories? I can't tell. What is kept parking? Two levels of parking?
It's five stories above the two levels of park.
And what is the height on the part that's facing left there? What is the height from grade to the top?
Eighty-one feet.
Okay, and now the house that's down below that is probably downhill, so it will appear to be more than eighty-one feet, I would imagine, correct?
Well, the actual measurement that you see there on back of the building is eighty-one feet to the roof. Not to the cupola, but to the roof.
And the cupola, that's purely decorative, but where does the elevator apparatus end up on the roof? Isn't it usually going above the roof a little bit?
That's the, the doghouse above the roof that you see there.
Okay, how high is that?
Uh, that's basically just one story, which is-
One story?
Ten feet.
I'm sorry, ten feet you said above the roof?
Ten feet above the roof.
And the cupola, how high is the cupola above the roof? Like, was the height?
It's another fifteen feet.
So ta- twenty-five feet above the roof is the top of the cupola?
That's correct.
And the, the parking garages, you said there's. Is there surface parking or is it all in the parking garage?
There's surface parking between Bayrow and Haley, which is your first level. That, that level to the other side of the upper deck is twelve and a half feet. The upper deck.
Yeah.
The access is from Finn Street in the form of a ramp.
Okay, point out Finch Street on here.
It's up at the top of the sheet.
That's the main entrance to the building, right?
It has the main entrance to the building and then it has the ramp to the upper parking deck.
And how do you get to the surface parking and where's the surface parking? Outdoor parking, you're saying, right?
On the lower level. It's not outdoor, it's underneath the building.
There's no outdoor parking?
No, that's ba- all the parking is basically is covered by the building.
And where is the EV stations? Because those are fire hazards.
There, there's the, if you go to, um.
And how many EVs are there?
Have access to this, but, um. If you go to the, one of my first drawings. I think it's, uh, A1. So if you, here's A1. And if you look at the, the L-shaped. Uh, red line. That's the, the building above. And what we're looking here is the, uh, is the lower parking. Which has the driveway on Haley and driveway on Bi- on Bayrow.
You point out the Haley entry point to this parking garage?
It's up on top of the, that's right there.
So where's Finch to the left?
Finn is to the left.
And, um, where, where are the egress points to the parking garage?
Uh, again, on Haley and, uh.
Finch?
And on Haley and on, uh, and Bayrow. Bayrow is at the lower.
Okay.
Low, you can see the driveway, it's both one and one side and the other.
And where, where are the EV spaces? How many?
On the, on the right side of, you know, where that red line is.
How many are there?
I believe that there is, uh. I believe there's ten there and ten above it.
Ten on this level? Is this below grade again or no?
Well, it's, it's outside of the building because the building's L-shaped, but it is on the lower, you know, level.
I thought you said there was no surface parking that was outdoors.
Well, because there's a parking garage above it or parking there.
So there's a parking garage attached to the building. Okay, there's no building above.
See there, this here is the upper level. You can see the ramp coming from Finn Street. And again, EV stations are on the right side.
Do you have ten on the below grade? Is it below?
The upper gr- on the upper deck.
And they're all in a row right together?
Right.
And how close are they to the egress right there? Is there room for fire apparatus to get in there? What would you do?
You have the, the ramp to go, but, uh, again, it's, uh. The, uh, the, and the building and the parking decks are both accessible. They're facing both streets, both Haley and Bayrow. And then you have the ramp from Finn Street.
And what is the height of each parking level?
The lower level, the ceiling height is twelve foot, six inches.
And the second level?
Is ten foot.
And what type of emergency apparatus can fit in those heights?
Well, then Satac for an ambulance, uh, you know, the delivery trucks. But you, you have to keep in mind that the fire apparatus. Uh, they have, you know, your, the building faces three streets, Finn, Haley and Bayrow.
I'm thinking of an EV fire.
Well, there again, it's, you know, you're, if there was ever a fire, imagine the fire department would. Be able to, you know, uh, access it with a ladder truck because it's, you know, the, you're talking about, you know, twenty. Five feet maximum to the upper deck.
And the, the EVs, are they adjacent then? Uh, can you bring us back to that parking garage? Are they adjacent to? The houses that are downhill on either Bayrow or Hallie? Like, where's the house on Bayrow?
There, there, I believe, ten feet or.
So there's a house right there?
Right.
How close is that house to those EV things? And are there open windows in the garage there?
I, I, again, but you would, uh, I would, uh, recommend that the, uh, site engineer, uh, address that.
Okay, thank you.
So we have, um, next up, Joe Rustig. He's a code compliant, uh, expert that we have that had the opportunity to evaluate this building. And if he, I think he's here. Coming up.
Sorry for the delay. I always go last.
No, you're not last. We got a lot more after you.
Good evening. For the record, Joe Verstig, independent code consultant for the applicants. You have my letter, planning and zoning, along with my CV. I'm a licensed building official, certified fire marshal. And I've been applying building life safety, uh, codes. For over forty years in my tenure at the state fire marshal's office. In the last twenty-eight years, going on twenty-nine as an independent code consultant. I serve on numerous building and fire safety code development committees for the National Fire Protection Association. Addressing building construction, building egress, multifamily residential, life safety and fire prevention. I'm also an adjunct instructor for the Connecticut Office of Education and Data Management. Instructing building and life safety seminars for mandatory continuing education credits for fire marshals, building officials. And licensed architects. Also been a contract instructor for the National Fire Protection Association. On a domestic and international basis for twenty-five years on building codes and life safety codes. In my letter, I tell you that I have reviewed the floor plans, elevations, the site plans for this project. Specifically for the height, the footprint, interior configuration. Um, construction materials, fire protection and life safety systems. Um, and location on the property as well as fire department access. And found them to be in compliance with the Connecticut State Building Code, Connecticut Fire Safety Code. And the Connecticut Fire Prevention Code. And in closing in that letter, I tell you that as such, the development does not pose a significant risk to life safety. And will not have an adverse impact on a substantial public interest. With regards to the code enforcement minutes dated February twenty-eighth. There were eight building official comments and twenty-seven fire marshal's comments. The eight building official comments and twenty-six fire marshal comments. All reference items that will be incorporated into the construction documents. That will be developed by the architect and engineering firms and submitted with the building permit application. So they were sort of, if you will, reminders or open-ended questions, you know, such as will the building have a generator? You know, we're going to require three sets of plans, et cetera, et cetera. Only one comment from the fire marshal addressed, it's going to increase his workload because it's now going to be. That many more residential inspections that he has to perform. Um, I've discussed this with the fire marshal. And twenty-nine, three oh five of the general statutes is the statute that requires fire marshals to conduct their annual inspections of residential properties. And you can look at the common areas anytime, day or night. But inside the dwelling units, only between the hours of nine and five. Now, the problem that poses for fire marshals is that in working communities, when you knock on the door, no one home. And fire marshals typically work nine to five, so you usually don't get access into the apartment. Even coming back in the evening, statute says thou shalt not. And if you knock on the door between nine and five and say, fire marshal, we'd like to do an inspection, absent consent, you can't go in. So you'd have to get administrative warrant. So yeah, it's a statement that, you know, it increases our inspections. It re-increases the number of doors you have to knock on and be denied access. Now, I have to reference and mention. That there were two documents submitted to planning and zoning. And, and recognizing full well that what the documents ask. And recommend is certainly not within the scope of planning and zoning. It's within the scope of town management. But because they have a hint of, of safety, uh, I feel obligated to address it. There was an email, uh, from Melanie and Liam Mason of May eleventh this year. Um. That basically in part, quote unquote, emergency services may struggle to accommodate the increased population. Then there was a letter, no date. Um, from the Fairfield Town Economic and Community Development. And. Their letter in page two, paragraph three. Stated that due to the rapid rate of development. We must ensure, I believe that's reference to the community and the town, that there are not, we are not building faster. Than our firefighters can handle. We request the fire marshal and other public safety leaders evaluate. The added strain. From. Height, volume and number of occupants that will come from this project and others. And this is a matter that's been raised several times by, by members of this committee. Um, on other projects and the answer is the same. Um, there is a standard. And just to appraise those people who wrote the letters, um, and re- re- remind the committee. That there is a standard from, or guideline from the National Fire Protection Association Standard seventeen-ten. That deals with staffing of career fire departments. And that is a, a benchmarking tool that fire department command staff and community leaders would use. To evaluate the effectiveness of their fire department, their staffing, their placement of firehouses. Uh, ever-expanding town, based on ever-expanding towns, increased hazards within the community. Such as increased truck, truck traffic on nine ninety-five, the occurrence of accidents involving. Flemy liquids, chemicals and so forth, um. And decide whether they want to accept that risk and keep the fire department where it is. And keep its responsibilities the same, or respond to that survey and hire more firefighters and buy more fire trucks. And increase more, more fire stations or adjust their mutual aid plan. Have more firefighters from adjoining towns come in on the first alarm rather than waiting for a second or third alarm. So that's, that's a document that's out there. Um, that is, that is available to the town to use. Um, the last thing, uh, that was mentioned, um, by the commissioner was the EV stations. And, um, and that they're a fire hazard. Um, no more than any other recharging or refueling operation. There's no prohibition on having an EV charger within the building. Um, they're governed by the National Electrical Code. Their placement is governed by the Fire Safety Code. Uh, they're certainly allowed to be inside. Uh, there is absolutely no requirement for fire truck access into the garage. Um, because of the openness of the holes in the exterior wall for the open garage, there is access by fire department ladder truck. And don't forget that this building will also be sprinkler protected and also have stand pipes within the stairwells. That the firefighters can access and hook up their hoses and appoint to safety within a two-hour parking garage or a two-hour exit stair. And then access and attack that fire. And because of the openness, you don't get the heat buildup, you don't get the accumulation of smoke and fumes. Yeah, EV fires do pose a bit, a greater challenge than any other vehicle. Um, but at the current time, there's no prohibition on it. Now, what we suspect and based on some research, the newer codes will merely change. The hazard classification from a sprinkler standard from ordinary hazard one to ordinary hazard two. And that should add about another hundred gallons a minute to the sprinkler system demand. That's about the only recommendations that we see to be codified in the next upcoming building code. If there.
Commissioner Collins.
Do the sprinkler systems put out EV fires?
No. The difficulty with EV fires, the fire is within the battery. So you can't get to it. You just drowned it.
Commissioner Harrison, are you trying to ask a question?
No, no, sorry. I was just thinking, sorry.
I, I will, I will expand on that, that response. What happens in a typical fire is that heat rises and it wants to continue up. And because it's a ceiling and it's still got energy, it'll move laterally. So in an open parking garage, it moves laterally and it moves out. It vents itself. Where in a typical room fire configuration, like say a bedroom, it would keep building, it keep building and radiate heat energy down. So what the sprinkler system is doing is wetting the heck out of the vehicles that, that is on fire. And it's also keeping the ceiling temperature cool so that we don't get that radiant energy down to spread that fire to other vehicles. In close proximity or even on the other side of the garage.
Commissioner Randolph. Um, Mr. Rustig, thanks for addressing the question on, um, staffing. Um, that, that is a question that has been coming up frequently, uh, from, from the general public. Um, I've got a couple of more mundane questions though. Um, I'm looking at just the street map and the, the, um, site plan. And Haley Avenue and Bayrow Street, I think you can go to. It's in, it's in the, um, I think it's in the civil set. Um, the second page, if we can go there, Ms. Harrigan. It's a one oh eight Bayrow Site Plan Set five one four two five seal. Yeah, that one. Yeah, so, uh, if you go to the, I think it's the next one shows a, a little bit better. The particular, yeah, but that one, alright, and that one's, uh, mine's not yellow, but. Yeah, so, um, I, I'm just looking at, um, I'll get the street names right here. Uh, Bayrow Street, which is on the left, and then Haley Street, which is on the right. And then Finn Street, which is the, it's not really shown there clearly. It's, uh, just the, the curb cut.
It is across the top.
Yeah, so, uh, um, what is the requirement? So you bring a piece of fire equipment into Bayrow, uh, or Haley, right? Uh, what's the requirement for turning that equipment around?
Yeah, the code requires, um, for fire department vehicle access. That you'd be able to get a fire truck within fifty feet of an exterior door that provides access into the building. Here you have three locations where you can provide access into the building. On both side streets and at the top, front entrance and both garage entrances. And then you have the requirement that you have to be able to walk around the building four hundred and fifty feet on foot. Either one person clockwise or one person counterclockwise, or in a larger building, two people going. In opposing directions, each having traveled not more than four hundred and fifty feet. So with three points of entry into the building, that can be achieved by a firefighter on Finn. Walking around, um, the counterclockwise to. Bureau and a firefighter from Bureau walking clockwise and meaning each not having traveled more than four.
Can you show me how a firefighter would walk around this building looking at the site plan right here? Cause I, I don't see that path.
Yeah.
I see the property lines here indicated by the, uh, line and double dash. Um, if you want to use the mouse, it's in the upper, upper right. Yeah, right there. So, uh, I don't see how a firefighter can walk around this building because the property line. Building's hard up against the property line.
Right.
How is a firefighter going to walk around this building? Yeah, the, the property line that she's outlining here, we're, we're hard up on the property line here.
Yep, and you can walk on, on someone else's property. That's not a problem.
Um. There's a fence there?
Yeah, that's possible. Yep.
So we don't show the, the houses for, I think it's one oh six. Yeah, one oh six and two forty, two forty-eight castle.
And again, I'm hearing that it's, it's probably four. And again, I'm hearing that it's it's probably four feet to the property line, probably not right on the property line.
So it's four feet and then the vertical height of this building is it's, this is a five over two.
Right, correct.
Five over two construction?
Sorry, Jeff, what does five over two mean?
Five over two is five wooden levels over two concrete levels.
Yeah, five residential stories above.
So so this is five over two, floor to floors, eleven feet. So so it's gonna be fifty-five plus the cupola over two levels of garage. So we're at seventy, seventy-seven feet plus the cupola. So you're gonna be standing two feet away and looking up at seventy-eight feet. Does that? I'm just intuitively, that seems problematic to me.
It it is if you think that that firefighter walking around the building is gonna do anything on the second, third, fourth, or fifth floor. It's just a requirement that they be able to walk around the building, simply so that you don't have a building that's one square mile and provide fifty-foot of fire department access in the front. It it limits where, how far you can walk around the building. And the bigger the building gets, the more fire truck points you have to have so that the distance, walking distance is less. There's no assumption that they do anything.
Right, this just seems, it it seems you're you're built up right against two forty-eight Castle and one oh six Bayrow. And then on the north side, you do have, oh, and then you've got one thirty Bayrow at the end of Bayrow Street, which is the upper left. You go, Emily, I don't know if you can. Yeah, that one. So you can't really get there. I I'm just, this just, this is a very dense building with with, unlike most buildings in a city where you've got it facing a road, you've got it facing Finn Street. But I I, you know, I'm just back to, so you pull a fire truck in here on Bayrow, right? And you're shooting up. So you don't need ladder access, is that correct?
Correct.
So you're shooting, you're basically, you're shooting water up?
No.
How you how you put that fire on upper floor?
Buildings, once they have a floor level more than thirty feet above the adjoining grade, the code writers deem it impractical, not beneficial to drag all that hose from the truck into the building and then up three stories. So they provide a stand pipe in each stairway, this stand pipe, which is a it's a pipe, probably six, seven inches in diameter. Our truck pulls up, attaches to the hydrant, sucks water out of the hydrant, pushes it through its pump into the fire department connection, serving the stand pipe, pressurizing it, and sending that water to the upper floors. The firefighters then access the stairs with their hose packs, their bottles, all their equipment, walk up to the floor above or below, wherever they want to stop, based on tactics, connect to the stand pipes and then play out their hose and fight the fire that way.
So I I'm looking at Bayrow here and let's see, I I can measure it here on the MetroCog's map. It's it's Bayrow, Bayrow looks like it's what, a twenty-four-foot wide street?
Yeah, I don't recall, is it?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight feet.
Twenty-eight. So how much space do you need around? So you you'd bring, be bringing a pumper in there, right? And how, well, how, a pumper's wide truck, right?
No wider than the highway. You're limited to eight feet, eight feet, six inches by federal D O T.
Feet, six inches. And then you probably need another, you'd need access for another vehicle in the other twenty-four feet.
Twenty-eight?
Or twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight.
So do you have any, do you have any concerns that in in the event of a fire, you'd be getting two pieces of equipment on Bayrow only halfway up? It it just seems like in a, in a fire situation, you're really hemmed in here. Because there's lot, the lot, you're covering a lot of the lot. You don't really have a a clean front street like in a city. You're in a back lot. And then I guess the the, would you have to bring anything in on the on the parking ramp? Would you, or is, that'll be on foot?
Be on foot. Now, all the code requires.
Back to, back to the ramp. The ramp right now is a ten percent. My understanding of one at twelve, and I am an architect, one at twelve is recommended, which is eight percent. So ten percent, if you're dragging here on a ten percent ramp, that seems like it'd be a dangerous condition, would it not?
No, not at all, because the eight percent addresses ramps within a garage that are used for accessing the stairs, similar to you would accessible ramps. So that's why you don't have to have level parking spaces, level floors within the garage. You're allowed to be parking on the slope as you go up.
Usually three or four, though, like a eight, a ten percent, and I'm a cyclist.
No, I I agree.
Ten percent ramp, ten percent steep. Steep ramp.
Steeper.
It's a steeper ramp.
Keep in mind, the existing code allows one and six, which is what you find in like Yankee State, the old Yankee stadiums. Those are.
For ramp, a one and six is permitted, you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
For existing. So for egress purposes, that's not an issue. Because the egress is into the stairwells off the floors. The ramp is just for driving in and driving out, which if you were to drive a truck in there up and down, the one and ten is not an issue because it would be in compliance and less steeper than what what D O T or your town usually would require for the maximum elevation or steepness of a roadway.
Yeah, ten percent steep, but you're saying it doesn't, it it complies with the code.
Yeah, okay. And and again, fire department vehicle road access lane is only required to be twenty feet wide. Commentary tells you that it provides sufficient width for a truck, fire truck, and other vehicles to pass. So it's two-way traffic as well as two trucks to pass with its hose lays in operation. I think the thing to remember here, well, not to remember, but to advise you that the fire alarm systems in these buildings are what they call addressable. Meaning that, you know, when we all went to school, if you pulled the pull station, the alarms went off through the whole building and you had no idea who pulled it. In in newer buildings, it's required that they be addressable. So you know if a manual pull station has been pulled, if a smoke detector's gone off, if a sprinkler's gone off. And you know on on a sprinkler system, you know on which floor the sprinkler's been activated because it's zoned. So it'll tell you that it's on the fifth floor. When the fire department comes to the front panel, it tells you it's a sprinkler activation, it's the fifth floor. If it's a pull station, it'll tell you that it's the north stairwell, third floor. So each item has an address and you go to that. So it's not like, okay, we pulled up to this building. What's going on?
So in a, in a, if there is a fire that spread out of one unit, how many, how many pieces of equipment would you have here?
You'd probably have everything the town has plus mutual aid.
Which is, which is six, ten?
Whatever you have. I think you get twenty-six firefighters.
So I I'm just wondering where twenty-six trucks are gonna go here. That that's my question.
Twenty-six trucks. Remember, the key truck is the first engine, gonna come to the fire department connection, it's gonna hook up to the hydrant. He's gonna charge that, he's gonna charge that stand pipe and he's gonna wait. And they're gonna wait for the fire officer to go in, check the panel, find out where it is, find out what it is. It's a stove fire, fifth floor apartment one oh eight. They're gonna go up there, they're gonna check it. Usually it's nothing. One sprinkler puts it out.
I'm talking about usually it's nothing. So say you had a fire here that spread out of a unit, which I know the fire ratings are very good on these and it's a sprinkled building. So it's sprinkled building, very, very safe, smoke detection's very, you got your panels, you can see where you're going. But say something does spread, somebody leaves a door open, something spreads, which is, you know, this is, you know, your biggest fear in life, right? You address this stuff. How many pieces of equipment would you have here, roughly?
You can do it with the one.
Well, you wouldn't just have one here.
You can do it with one engine. Now it's a matter of 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 people. So typically you bring more trucks because you have minimum sta- certain number of people per truck, whatever your staffing levels here are.
Right, but I'm I'm just, like, I see an act, a minor accident on the highway and there's, you know, multiple responders to that, you know, four, six to a traffic accident. How many?
I I'll tell you why. That that's a bad comparison. I'll tell you why. Because when I was a trooper on the highway, the best thing you could do on nine ninety-five, when there was a car crash, because it was just one trooper, if it was a fatal, you got a sergeant. You go out there and you stop all three lanes of traffic. This way, nobody's zipping by you at seventy miles an hour trying to look at what you're doing. You stop everything, you back it up, and you wait for New Jersey State Police to call up and say, what the hell are you doing in Connecticut? Because it backed up over the Jersey Bridge. But they're going by me at five miles an hour. And that's what we do now. We bring three fire trucks out, even when the truck, even when the accident's on the median. There's a trooper, there's two troopers, there's three or four fire trucks, and we've taken three lanes of traffic and we've slowed them down on the median. Why? Because they're not going by us fast. So if they hit us, they knock us over. If they hit the truck, they bump us. They don't kill us.
I I appreciate that. So, but I'm just wondering, this is really tight. This, you know, Haley is a dead end, Bayrow's a dead end, Finn Street is a, you know, small loop road. You likely have three or four pieces of equipment here. Okay, so I don't know where they go. I mean, because the 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 frontage on Bayrow is, it looks like you could fit one truck there. Haley looks like you may fit two. And then Finn, you got a little more space, but it just looks incredibly tight here to have any sort of responder.
The key is, like I said, the first truck at the fire, at the hydrant on the stand pipe. Anybody else can park anywhere they want and will walk to it. So you can back them up. You can get fifteen, thirty fire trucks and back them up. They're gonna get off the trucks, take their equipment, and they're gonna walk to it. Because they access the fire by using the stairs and they take their equipment up the stairs.
So I I I'd just like to ask, because this is life safety, right?
That's absolutely.
Training as an architect, this is what we care most about, is life safety. Property safety, important, but life safety we care about. And you, you know, I don't know if you, if you're prepared to answer this, but unequivocally, can you say there is no life safety issue based upon access, the limited access on Haley and Bayrow Street here? Unequivocally, or if you don't, if you, you need to study this more, I respect that.
Rephrase the question or?
Is there unequivocally no safety issue posed by the limited access on Bayrow and Haley Avenue to assure life sa- to basically assure that there's no life safety threat? In the event of a, of a, not just a kitchen fire, but an actual fire in this building that that spreads, a multi-unit fire, could you get enough equipment in there? Because it it, as a layperson, you know, it looks very, very tight.
And as I said, the answer is yes. And as I said, it's only critical that you get the one fire truck at the fire department connection to supply the sprinklers and the stand pipes. Everybody else is walking to the fire. So if you want to bring them by a bus with all the equipment, that's fine. And that's why we typically require mutual aid, because we bring in more trucks with more people. It's not that I need the truck, but I need the people. And then I need to rotate the people. I need to rotate the crews. So I go to a third, fourth alarm, I bring in more people to give that first two engine a break to rotate the crews. So I need the additional people, not so much the additional trucks. The second engine is nice in case there's a problem with the first one. But the ladder truck, you park it off to the side. It's a toolbox. The taller buildings go, the less we rely on multiple trucks. We just need the people.
Commissioner Harrison, go ahead.
Yeah, just, so you're, you're, yeah, I think this is a good segue. You're talking about people. How many, how many fire personnel does the town of Fairfield have?
I I don't accurately recall. I think roughly it might have been twenty-six, maybe.
Twenty-six per shift?
Not per shift in total. I don't know.
Oh, I thought we had about ninety-four, maybe. I I don't know. I I was, okay. I thought we had about ninety-four full-time and maybe, I I don't know. Okay. So I guess how many fire personnel does N F P A require on the scene in a number of minutes? Is it like eight minutes, I think, right?
Doesn't require any.
I thought, okay, I thought N F P A had required a requirement or guidance. They don't?
Provides guidance seventeen ten, N F P A seventeen ten provides guidance on staffing, response times, time to respond to the alarm, time to respond from the firehouse to the fire, time to put water on the fire. Those are all cues that are in seventeen ten that the town and the fire department would look at. Do they meet those and can they objectively meet those? And then obviously, what's the cost? Or what's the acceptable risk if we don't?
Okay, because I think you brought up N F P A, I think in your earlier comments, so do we meet, yeah, do we meet the guidance to have X amount of firefighters on the scene in, what, seven to eight minutes?
That's a town management decision.
Well, you, well, I'm not asking the town, I'm asking you. You're you're here as the fire expert for this project.
Not a requirement. Not a mandatory standard.
It's our standard, it's our standard as a zoning commission to ensure that our town, that we we are employing the, you know, the appropriate public safety map, you know, measures to ensure safety here.
And I've testified in the past that if you want to use seventeen ten as a metric, that you use it on everything. Because it has cues for two-story homes, two thousand square foot. And this happened in another community where they tried to apply seventeen ten in part to an apartment building when the case, twenty minutes before our hearing, was a three thousand square foot addition on a private home. Well, you didn't have enough staffing for the three thousand square foot addition. So you can't apply the standard apart. This is a holistic approach. Town management, fire department management has to sit down to decide, one, do they want to go down that road and do that evaluation? And have that finding. What if it's negative? Then are we on the hook if we don't do something? And then to what extent do we do it? Are we adequately covered? Are we comfortable with it? What's our history show us? How do we manage it with mutual aid? Because the standard says, or this, not the standard, but the guideline says that as an alternative, acceptable alternative to having the staffing under your, in your employ, you can have mutual aid companies from adjoining towns fulfill that, that staffing.
So you're saying seventeen ten is not code, but it's it's a standard or just a guidance number?
It's a guidance. It's an N F P A. They call it a standard because that's what they, they list their documents as, a standard number seventeen ten. But it's a guideline.
So you don't think we have to abide by their guideline? Is that what you're saying?
No requirement to do so. The only reason I brought it up is because there were two two written memos, one a letter and one an email, that talked about the town should do something about fire department staffing, at least evaluate it. So I offered it as N F P A seventeen ten as a standard that would be used to do that if the town chose so to do that. And again, I reinforced that it's not within the jurisdiction of the planning and zoning to implement that, that evaluation.
But it, but we have brought, I think we have some discretion here in this kind of hearing where we can make, ensure that we are enabling the correct public health and safety standards. Even if, even if this is not explicitly, explicitly stated.
Yeah, there's case law. It's pretty well known that guidelines are not law in the state of Connecticut. There's guidelines for different departments such as wetlands. There's other guidelines for other departments. And the case law says they don't rise to the level of law. You still have to abide by the case law and statute. So guidelines are not, quote, law recognized in the state of Connecticut.
No, I appreciate that. No, thank you, Attorney Bellis. Then just one more question. I guess, how would you grade this, this type of building? I mean, would you build this as kind of garden apartments or you know, mid-rise? Like, how would, how would you define it?
Yeah, this would be a mid-rise apartment building.
And how many staff members would you recommend? Just using your experience training, you know, you have a lot of, you know, professional experience here. How many would you recommend that arrive on the, on that scene?
I make no recommendation.
You have no recommendation?
No, because it's not a requirement of the code. The standard here is that, does it comply with the Connecticut State Building Code, Connecticut Fire Safety Code, and the Fire Prevention Code as applicable? And that's been the standard of care. Because those are the regulatory documents required by statutes.
So as a building professional or a fire, you know, fire marshal, you don't have any number recommendation?
No, I don't.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thanks for your answers.
Any final questions for Mr. Verstig?
I have a question.
Fair brought. Go ahead.
So on the code review, there, there was concern about access from Finn Street based on the street width. The, and the street parking on Finn may obstruct fire department operations. Could you address that?
Yeah, you're required to have a twenty-foot lane clear. And and there was also a reference that it may require, I don't have it in front of me.
I I can.
Yeah, you you may want to address it because that has to do with.
I'm not sure her question.
Yeah, yeah. Let's see, fire department access roads. There was something about, you have an item number?
Yeah, it's towards the bottom, I think. Oh, it's item number eight.
It's a funny numbering system.
Number eight, before they get to access roads.
They require, may require parking.
It says Finn Street main access for building. The street width along with parking a road may affect fire department operations. Access on Finn Street particularly may require parking authority review and or dedicated fire lanes in front. What what is that? Because my recollection of, I still don't understand. I'm gonna have to drive by because these are dead ends and so you're there's houses right above it. I I wish we could see a, a, a plan showing where, where this is in context, but so, if you could just address that.
Yeah, I think the fire marshal was concerned that possibly there would be parking on that road, um, and and that you would consult with the parking authority. Or if you. Whether the parking authority does, no parking signs, I don't know, that's.
Well, 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 it says there's street parking, so I assume there is street parking on Finn Street right now. Are you saying that you would expect, um, the parking authority to prohibit parking if there, if it is allowed now? Or I think that's up to the police commission, I'm not sure, parking, I don't think the parking authority relates to anything. Um, except for train station parking, but, um. So you're, are you saying that if there is an access problem for, that could affect fire department operations from Finn Street, which is the main access? Because of street parking, then you would expect somebody in, with authority over parking to remove street parking from Finn Street?
No, let, let's read this so that everybody's clear on it, number eight, Finch, Finn Street main access for building. The street width along with parking on road may affect fire department ops, I mean, operations. Uh, ax, fire department oper, operations, access on Finn Street particularly may require parking authority review. And or dedicated fire lanes in front, I think that's just a general statement. Not specifying that there's parking and it's a hazard, that it's a problem, that it reduces it. It's just a general comment, no different than any one in here that says, I need three la, three sets of drawings.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I just clarify as well? My recollection of the code meeting was that that should probably read the local traffic authority. Instead of the parking authority, which is a different agency that leases the parking spaces to commuters.
Oh, that's what that was.
As clarifying.
Okay, thank you.
And 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 also, you know, I mentioned that, that the fire code requires a twenty-foot wide fire department access road. And the reason it does so is for vehicles going in two directions. On a one-lane road, and this has been approved in this town, uh, where a fire lane has been. Uh, reduced to fourteen feet in in a single direction on other, um, housing projects. So if it's a one-lane road, uh, and and the fire truck has at least fourteen feet, even twelve feet, that's sufficient to get the fire truck in. And again, the standpipe's gonna be, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's alright, go on, yeah.
Okay, no, no, so, I mean, that's just a generalized comment, nothing specific, but this, this comes up during. Uh, the review of the site plan by the fire marshal during the construction documents.
Someone said it might only be twenty feet wide, or is it twenty-four feet wide?
The code requires a minimum twenty.
Is it twenty or twenty-four feet, I saw, thought it had to be twenty-four.
What's the actual width?
It's twenty feet wide on the ramp?
On the ramp? The ramp is twenty feet wide, is it?
That's a question for, yeah, I'm pretty sure it is.
Yeah, I I don't know the width of the ramp, but again, we're not taking a fire truck stepping down a ramp, so.
Um, the generator, is there a fire code requirement that generators have to be outside the building? And if so, where is the generator, I couldn't see it on the plans.
That's a question.
Must be pretty big generator for a hundred units.
It's a question for the architect, but the generator can't be located within the building.
We can have. Hey, go ahead. We can have the answer to that, uh, next week, um, I think we're gonna have to end it there. I know there are folks here who want to be heard on this, we are holding this open until next week, um. The applicant will, I I hope finish their presentation and then we'll turn to public comment, anyone who wants to be heard can. If you're not able to make it in person, uh, or remote next week, please feel free to submit comment in writing by email, uh, we read those as well. Um, but otherwise, you'll have a a chance to be heard, uh, once the application is finished.
Commissioner, just a quick question about scheduling for next week, will this resume? Uh, uh, up front rather than push down to the back again?
We take, uh, some administrative items upfront, so it will not be, you know, the first item on the agenda. I think as far as public hearing, once we get to the public hearings, I I believe it'll be, uh.
There may be one other item which was continued, which is Churchill Road, which is a two-lot subdivision, which may be heard before this.
Thank you.
Since there has been so much confusion on the drawings and whatever. And I think that I sent a letter into encouraging the, um, commissioners and you guys have been doing a great job. Go and take a look, because, Mr. Randolph, you said you don't think that you can walk around, you can't. If you see it with your eye, you're going to see, you're gonna be able to see if it's a one-way street.
We'll have, you, you will have plenty of time to, uh, to win, uh, once we turn to public comment, we do, uh, read the emails.
Be prepared.
Thank you, um, okay, we will, uh, hold this over until next week and, uh, I will adjourn tonight.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Thank you.